Good afternoon, everyone. Today is March 6th. Please settle down, please. We're starting our meeting here. Today is March 26, 2024. It's 3:00 PM plus 10 minutes. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're beginning our meeting. Please sit down, quiet down, so that we can get on with our business. Thank you.
This is a City of Prescott voting meeting. We'll start off with some introductions and announcements from Mayor Pro Tem, and then we'll have an invocation from Matt Kotman of the Solid Rock Christian Fellowship, followed by a pledge of allegiance from Councilmember Rusing. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some announcements today. So, the City of Prescott Civic Enhancement Committee is now accepting grant applications from eligible nonprofit organizations that promote music and parks in the City of Prescott. These organizations are encouraged to apply for grant funding for fiscal year 2025, which is July 1, 2024, to June 30 of 2025. The application filing deadline is 5 o'clock Friday, April 12. Applications are available on the City of Prescott website. For additional information, please contact the city clerk's office at (928) 777-1437, or city.clerk@prescott-az.gov. Number two, the City of Prescott is currently seeking applications for the following boards, committees, and commissions. The Building Advisory and Appeals Board for a three-year term. The Industrial Development Authority Board, two positions, one for one-year term and the other one for a four-year term. You must be a resident of the city to apply for both of these groups. Applications are due to the city by Friday, May 24 at 5:00. For more information on the groups, visit the city's website at CityOfPrescottBoardsAndCommissionsVacancies, or contact the city clerk's office at (928) 777-1437. Number three, the Prescott Public Library will be closed on Easter Sunday, March 31, and will reopen on Monday, April 1 at 9:00 AM. National Library Week is April 7 through the 13th, and the Prescott Public Library encourages everyone in the community to visit the library to explore all that we have to offer. Prescott Public Library is there for you. Check the library's online events calendar at www.prescatelibrary.info, or call (928) 777-1500 for more information. And the final announcement is the City of Prescott and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, known as FEMA, have been working on an update of the city's flood hazard maps. More information about the mapping project and a link to view the maps, the updated maps, can be accessed from the city's website, prescott-az.gov. A public flood risk open house is also being scheduled. It's being held on April 1, 2024, from 4 to 7, at the Rowley B. Simmons Community Center on Rossar Street, to allow the public to review and discuss the preliminary flood maps in person. I guess there is one more here. On Saturday, April 6, rather, join Councilmember Kathy Rusing at the Prescott Farmers Market from 7:30 to 12:30 PM. Joining her will be Community Outreach Director John Heine. They will be meeting citizens, answering questions, and providing some fun city swag items. Oh, I can't wait. That's it, Mayor.
City swag. I can't wait either. And thank you all for coming. Boy, this is a full council chambers. I don't think we've had this many people in a meeting here in a long time. So, I know each one of you is either interested in city government, or more likely, a particular item on our agenda. So, we'll start off with the invocation from Pastor Matt Kotman from the Solid Rock Christian Fellowship, followed by a pledge of allegiance from Councilmember Rusing.
Would you please bow your heads with me in prayer? Father, we thank you for your goodness. Looking around the room today, I see so many first responders, and we thank you for those who would put their lives in harm's way for others, an example that you gave us this week, Easter week, when your son laid down his life for us. We thank you, Lord, that you have granted wisdom to governments. We pray, Lord, for this meeting to be a meeting where good wisdom would prevail, for the flourishing of our town, for the good of our people, for the benefit of all who are here. So, Lord, lead our leaders. We pray this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Councilmember Rusing. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Kentelme?
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth?
Here.
Councilman Gambogi?
Here.
Councilman Montoya?
Still here.
Councilman Moore?
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing?
Here.
All are present.
Well, next, proceed to two proclamations. The first one is Water Awareness Month, presented by Councilmember Rusing.
Is there anyone else here from Public Works? I would like the whole department here. Thank you.
I also invited members of Prescott Creek and Seawag. So, any members who are here, please come on up.
Please join us. Whereas, water is one of Arizona's most vital and precious resources. And while the City of Prescott's water resources are limited, population growth continues to increase the demand for water. And all citizens living in the City of Prescott should strive to use water in the most efficient way possible by incorporating sustainable water use practices to ensure a long-term sufficient water supply. Whereas, creating a culture of conservation will greatly reduce the impacts of drought on our resources, economy, and quality of life. And water-smart landscaping is an opportunity to enhance the native beauty of our community while promoting community engagement and sharing. And the City of Prescott offers citizens rebates through the Water Conservation Incentive Program to encourage water conservation inside and out, this month and every month of the year. And the City of Prescott is in the process of modernizing its water infrastructure to provide its customers with the most current technology for leak detection and tracking water consumption. Whereas, the City of Prescott is committed to delivering high-quality water and managing its water resources to meet the needs of its current and future customers. Whereas, public education and participation is key to any water conservation program. And greater awareness of water issues can be gained through community education, action, and celebration. Now, therefore, feel good. Mayor of the City of Prescott does hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Awareness Month, and it's very appropriate that today it is raining.
Thank you, Councilperson Rusing, also the chair of our Water Issue Subcommittee for the city. So, I want to thank you too, Mayor, and I wanted to acknowledge the hard work of all the dedicated professionals here at the city that ensure that the water that we drink and that we use every day gets to us in an abundant fashion and meets the stringent standards of the EPA's drinking water standards. I want to thank the staff that overlooks our stormwater program to ensure that the water that's leaving our streets and our cities' impervious areas are not polluting our lakes and streams. I wanted to thank our wastewater professionals out at our treatment plants, who are out there treating our water so that we can put it to good use in our golf course, industrial uses, and for replenishing our aquifer. And also, our Water Resource Group that is making sure that the legal obligations that we have to abide by, by Arizona Department of Water Resources standards, are being met by our city so that we have abundant water supply through enforcement of our water policy, water conservation, and meeting all legal standards. So, in addition, up here, we have members of groups such as Prescott Creeks and Citizens' Water Advisory Group, who make a tremendous effort to make sure that our creeks and our streams are clean and that we're providing a sustainable water future for us to enjoy and for those that come after us. So, I just encourage all of us to go ahead and continue to work together to provide for a sustainable water future for Prescott, so that we can keep on enjoying the benefits that water brings to this community for us and for all generations to come. So, thank you.[948.23][948.23](Applause). Thank you. Michael?
Perfect. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Councilmember. My name is Michael Byrd. I'm the Executive Director for Prescott Creeks. We are a nonprofit that has been here in the community since 1990. And I think one of the things, when we think about water, we always like to remind folks that Prescott is where it is because of the surface water that we had and have here. So, we have many different types of water, water in the ground, water flowing across the surface, and we're pleased to have been working with the city for all these years, trying to bring attention and help everybody understand how important that resource is. One of the ways that we do that is through our Granite Creek Cleanup Event, that we partner with the city and other community entities to do each year in April. This year, Granite Creek Cleanup is on April 20, concurrent with the Earth Day Celebration downtown. We are encouraging folks and requiring folks to preregister for that event. You can find all that information about Granite Creek Cleanup on the Prescott Creeks website at prescottcreeks.org. So, thank you for the opportunity. Thanks for everybody being involved with water.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. This next proclamation is for the National Vietnam Veteran War Day. That is March 29. So, I know we have a couple of Vietnam veterans, and if you'd like to come up and join me, I'd appreciate your presence. I think quite a few other of the guys probably couldn't make it through the weather.[1092.04][1092.04](Applause). As you may know, I am a Vietnam Combat Infantry veteran. I served in Vietnam from 1970 to 1971. The Vietnam War era occurred between 1964 and 1975. During that period, over 9 million men and women served in the military. 2.7 million were actually deployed and served in the country of Vietnam and the surrounding ocean waters. Over 40% of the Vietnam era veterans have passed away, and over 70% of the war veterans have now passed, leaving just about 800,000 still living today. The treatment that the returning veterans received from the public, the media, in academia, and the workplace was disdainful, discriminatory, and worse. Most Americans know this treatment was wrong. Soldiers don't start wars. They fight and die for the decisions that our elected representatives make. The treatment of these men and women is a stain on American honor that still exists. It took 45 years for the creation of a day officially honoring these men and women to finally be enacted. National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March 29 of every year. This year and this day is a chance to make a small amends to the remaining veterans for the mistreatment that they endured, to some extent or other. With that prelude, I'll now present this proclamation. Proclamation, National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March 29, 2024. Whereas, by an act of Congress signed into law by President Donald J. Trump on March 28, 2017, the first federal statute to specifically honor Vietnam veterans, created National Vietnam War Veterans Day to be observed on the 29th of March of each year. And whereas, on March 29, 1973, the last American combat troops withdrew from South Vietnam after more than 9 million men and women served in the U.S. military services during the Vietnam War era. And whereas, on March 29, 2023, marked the 50th anniversary of the full withdrawal of combat troops from Vietnam. And whereas, 58,724 men and women died serving during the Vietnam War. And whereas, due to the divisive nature of the Vietnam War, few returning veterans were properly welcomed home and honored for their service and sacrifice to the founding ideals of our nation. And whereas, the City of Prescott prides itself in valuing its many military veteran residents. And whereas, it is only right and proper that the City of Prescott and its residents recognize and honor all of its Vietnam War veterans for their service and sacrifice. Now, therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, on behalf of the Prescott City Council, to hereby encourage all citizens to display the flag of the United States to honor Vietnam War veterans, and to hereby acknowledge March 29, 2024, as National Vietnam War Veterans Day.
I want to thank the mayor for providing this proclamation. We just did one this last week over at the county. I think it's great to have so many people here today to see this. I wish we had more of our veterans here today to be able to be recognized with this proclamation. So, I fought from '68 to '71, two tours, first gab on the first tour, and my friend Hunter First on the second. He was on the ground, I was in the air, and he always thumbed for me to pick him up, and I couldn't see him in the jungle, so he had to stay there and fight. So, anyway, thank you, everybody, for coming, and thank you for this proclamation.[1407.82][1407.82](Applause).
While the mayor makes his way back up here, we'll go ahead and get started with our presentations. And the first item that we have is a presentation of checks to participating nonprofits for the Light the World Giving Machine.
Everybody who's a part of the Light the World Giving Machine, would you come up and stand right over here? Mayor Good, city council, and staff, thank you for the opportunity, for the chance to present before you today. My name is Brett Mangum, and this is my wife, Nicole Mangum, and we were asked to be the city leagues for the Light the World Giving Machine effort. I know most of you are familiar with the Giving Machine concept. There's many here that might not be, but a giving machine is a vending machine that instead of going and buying something for yourself, you go and buy something for somebody else. We partnered with... Are you gonna come help me out? The on button.
That's what I missed.[1499.01][1499.01](Laughter). Okay.
You were doing great.[1503.01][1503.01](Laughter).
I can project. So, some of the nonprofits that we partnered with in the Giving Machine included Life Connections, the Launchpad Teen Center, Prescott Area Shelter Services, and Catholic Charities, as well as Welcome to America Project and Mentors International, and many representatives here today. This Giving Machine project is sponsored by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and we have President Kimball here with us today from the Prescott, Arizona State, and President Dalton, a counselor in the Prescott Valley State Presidency, and we'd like to recognize them and thank them for being here. And they really sponsored the whole project, paid for all the overhead expenses, and we're grateful for them. What the Giving Machine did for our community is, number one, it unified us around charitable and Christ-like giving this year. Worldwide, the Giving Machines produced $10.4 million of donations for charities around the world. In Arizona, it was $1.5 million, and the Prescott area raised almost $86,000 in about two weeks of donations.[1584.13][1584.13](Applause). We'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for their support. We'd also like to thank the citizens of Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, the Quad City area, for their generous donations. And so, these checks that we're gonna present here in just a minute, thanks, are really from the people of this area who opened their wallets and gave generously. We'd also like to thank, we have a few of people on our committee, too, that are here. Nick, would you like to recognize those that are here from our committee?
Yes. We have Julie Brown Fluger, who works with Prescott Area Shelter Services, Diane Duncan, who works with Life Connections, Marjorie Krenzik, who works with Life Connections also, and you look familiar? Yes, yes. Kathy with Prescott Area Shelter Services, Sam Yamamoto, who was on our committee, and the Louders, Fran Lauder right here, Steve Lauder right here. They are the state representatives for Arizona for this initiative, and we thank them for their support.
Give them a hand. They deserve it. They work hard.[1660.36][1660.36](Applause). Okay. So, what check do you have first? And we'd like to get some... Mr. Montoya, would you come down here and accept this for the Launchpad? And any of the city council members or the mayor would like to be in this photo op, we'd invite you to come down and represent the people of Prescott area as we present these checks.
This is the biggest check I've ever had in my life.
Why don't you move to the side here, and we'll get a picture? Anybody from the city council that would like to join? Go ahead and stand right there. Yes, please. Could we have our church leaders come in over here, too? That's perfect. So, the Launchpad earned $12,455 from the citizens of Yaupai County. Thank you.[1727.54][1727.54](Applause). Who do we have next? Moving right along. Life Connections, please.
And Brett, you have to be in the picture.
Oh. Come on, come on. Come join us. Okay. Thank you. Let's give them a hand. It was $12,331 to Life Connections. And then, our last check that we'd like to hand out is to Prescott Area Shelter Services. Thank you. And could we have our city leaders? You've got to represent the people of Prescott. They all... And the church. Thank you. Okay. And that check was for $19,390. Thank you. Thank you. And we have also found out this week that the Giving Machines are coming back this next year, so look for us this year. And Margot Christiansen, would you come up here? So I forgot to thank Margot. Margot owns the lot that we placed the Giving Machine on, and she allowed us to use her lot. Thank you. I should have had you up here the whole time. And then I also forgot to thank the Prescott Chamber and Sherry Heiney, who were super instrumental in helping us get the location and helped us with power, electricity, and it was a community effort. And I want to thank all of you for representing the community. I know you're all here for this presentation today anyway, so thank you. Yes, yes. Should we move these? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation to Firefighter of the Year Travis Mayo and Paramedic of the Year Brandon Scott.
I don't think they were whistling for me, just for the record. Mayor and Council, Fire Chief Holodura, it is an honor to be here to honor some of our personnel. And a couple of things that I want to quickly mention about this award. Every year, we ask the firefighters of our department to nominate their peers. And this year, I'm happy to report that we got six very, very good nominations. So they made it difficult on us because we had to pick a few. We normally recognize the paramedic of the year during EMS week, but we felt it was really important to bring those two together. And we're going to start today with the firefighter of the year. And one thing that's remarkable about this is firefighter Mayo, where did he go? Get up here, come on, is one of our newer members of the department. And it is very unusual for us to get a recognition at this stage in somebody's career. I can tell you, having watched this gentleman over his fairly short career here, it is extremely well deserved. And I'll let him illustrate a little bit more, but let me just cover real quick why he was nominated. One of the things that stood out in the nominations is that his peers said, in addition to all of the things that he does, including being involved in many departmental activities, training his heart out, he just completed the engineer's test in record time and was very successful. But one of the things that set it apart is he says, well, or his peers said, before he leaves the station every day, he checks in with the oncoming crew individually and says, is there anything I can do for you? And that is specifically why we selected Travis to be the 2024, or 2023 technically, firefighter of the year. And so I want to recognize him and congratulate him very much. And we're going to present him with an award and a certificate. There you go. And your certificate, if you want to say a few words?
Yeah, actually, I wrote something.
Oh, you wrote something, see? I'm actually not surprised.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you and I want to thank everyone that nominated me. I'm deeply honored and humbled to stand before you today as the recipient of firefighter of the year. This recognition is not just a reflection of my individual efforts, but a testament to the collective dedication and sacrifice of every firefighter who serves our community. It's a calling that demands courage, resilience, and unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of others. But today, as I accept this award, I do so on behalf of every firefighter who's ever donned the uniform and answered the call of duty. Each day presents new challenges that require courage, skill, and compassion. I'm grateful to my fellow firefighters whose unwavering support and camaraderie inspire me to be the best version of myself every single day. Together, we are a formidable force for good, standing as a beacon of hope and strength in times of crisis. I want to also extend my heartfelt gratitude to our community. Your trust and support fuel the determination to serve with honor and integrity. It is a privilege to be entrusted with the responsibility of keeping you safe, and I am truly grateful for the opportunity to make a difference in your lives. I would like to thank my family, Shelby, Lilly, and Lyric for the continued support throughout my journey at Prescott Fire Department. Without them, I don't know where I would be. In closing, I'm reminded, or I remind you to never forget about the little things. As Jason Harrison told me, I'm up here because of my attention to detail when it comes to the little things, like folding toilet paper or asking if anyone needs anything before I leave. So thank you once again for this incredible honor. I am deeply grateful, and I pledge to continue serving with passion, dedication, and unwavering resolve. It's in my blood to finish this, making sure I didn't miss anything, so chief, you need anything before I get out of here? Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, you guys stay up here because you don't want to be going back and forth. All right. This next recognition is for paramedic of the year. And you may have a little bit of deja vu because the gentleman that we're about to recognize was also the firefighter of the year last year. Brandon Scott, why don't you come up here? All right, so as I mentioned in our work session, our firefighters do a lot of program management during their 56-hour shifts. And Brandon, for a very long time, has been holding up our EMS supply program. He did that during the course of the pandemic, and that is no small feat. He made sure that we had enough EMS supplies, enough PPE supplies to make it through that time. But beyond that, the reason why we're recognizing him especially today is because as we restructured our contract with Lifeline Ambulance about a year ago, we started a supplies and exchange equipment program with them to more efficiently supply our department with needed medical supplies. And he took it upon himself to contact Lifeline, build that relationship, figure out how to structure that, and put resupply cabinets in all of our stations that actually, when I had a friend here recently, a couple of weeks ago, that toured our stations, he literally looked at it and said, I want that at my fire department. It is efficient, it is effective, it is definitely one of the innovative ideas, and one of the many reasons why we want to recognize him as an excellent paramedic, because his field care is also just as excellent. With that, I can't thank you enough for all the work that you've done over the many, many, many years, and I'm honored to give you the recognition of paramedic of the year.
All right, and now we're going to recognize some of our police staff. So a recognition of Prescott Police Department 2023 Employee of the Year Award recipients, there's several. Bill Hill, Volunteer of the Year, Officer Alec Williamson, Rookie of the Year, Brandy Serta, I hope I said that right, Public Safety Dispatcher of the Year, Don Thomas, Civilian Employee of the Year, Sergeant Pat Mora, Supervisor of the Year, and Detective Yasmin Cardenas, Officer of the Year.
All right, guys, do you guys have your speeches prepared? I know you're worried, but you have to come up. So as many of you know, we had our formal awards ceremony last Friday, recognizing these individuals, and Detective Cardenas is actually training today, so she can't be here with us. Much like the fire department, I am so proud of these individuals because they're recognized and nominated by their peers. And we have an awards committee that goes through all of these nominations and has to make the very difficult recommendation to our staff about who's going to receive these prestigious awards. There's a very common theme with each of these individuals, a heart for service, compassion, and professionalism. As we talked about earlier today, the heart of our department, the heart of this community, are the men and women that serve it so diligently every single day, and this is a handful of them. Don Thomas, who is our civilian of the year, is one of our victim advocates who goes to court and supports victims through their time of need. Sergeant Patrick Mora is a longtime employee with us and a supervisor with us. And as we all know, the supervisors on the street are the ones that shape and ensure that our morale and esprit de corps is what it needs to be. And Patrick is a fine example of that leadership and passion for what we do every day in supporting and loving his people. Alec Williamson is our Rookie of the Year, right? So somebody who's been with us for less than two years and has been an example of hard work, much like firefighter of the year, our paramedic of the year. What do you need? He's always there to step up when we have those needs for extra service and extra support. And then, of course, our volunteer, Bill Hill, one of those that donates so much time to our community and so much time to our profession, could not absolutely do what we do without the support of our volunteers. And I am so happy to celebrate you all. Our team had to run off to an emergency, but we're here still to celebrate you, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our open call to the public. The city of Prescott welcomes public engagement, as you can see today, and residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being. Has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic, and topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do have two comment cards. The first one is from Suzette Conrady.
Mayor, Council. Today, we celebrate the self-destruction of the mayoral recall effort. On the surface, on the surface, the recall was driven by emotion and rumors rather than facts, and therefore, it never made much sense to the majority of logical Prescott voters who support Mayor Good and his policies. We should never forget, however, that under the surface still lies what many believe is the real power and money base behind the recall, the local developer and landowner contingent with possible hooks into the rodeo. They will strike again because there's simply too much at stake. To the current and former council members who constantly take potshots at the council on the radio and online, grow up. Your public grievance airing is not helpful to anyone. You of all people know there are plenty of ways to engage with the city, to address meaningful concerns, if that is even your intent. And I'd like to close with a positive note. We can be grateful that we have a strong, honest mayor and the majority of council members who clearly honor their oaths of office. I appreciate them for taking on thankless public office duties and weathering the storms that come with it. They can't do it alone, however, either. These council members need our support, and we must stay informed by participating in these council meetings, asking questions, and thinking critically. This will help ensure we retain the rational, common sense city government that we deserve.
And before I call up the next citizen with a public comment, I did want to announce that a bag was found out in the parking lot underneath a silver vehicle with a license plate K R P 38. If that's your bag, Amber will have it. She's up here in the front row, and then she's also located up in the front in Suite 302. Our next comment card is from Harry Oberg.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mr. Mayor and Council, I want to thank you for this opportunity to provide comments on a very dark and unnecessary chapter in the history of Prescott. Let me be clear, I am happy about the unfortunate episode that's behind us. Unlike many here, I was raised in Prescott, and over time, got to know most of those on both sides of this issue. In fact, Becky Ruffner was a classmate of mine for 12 years in grade school. It is so unfortunate that people I call acquaintances and even some fellow veterans saw the need to bring this recall action forward, which has totally embarrassed our city and our citizens. Mayor Good, I sat in your seat as mayor from 2015 to 2017, and the understanding and understand the complexities of deliberating and taking action on the many and varied issues that this council must address. You have done a commendable job, both as councilman and mayor. It is shameful that you and this council had to endure this recall instead of devoting your full attention and efforts to many important issues facing this city. Unfortunately, there are some citizens who are unaware of the complex city policies and state statutes that govern the actions of municipalities. I heard in the last few months from the news media and the recall opponents that there has been a lack of transparency in many actions brought before this council. To provide clarity, the council must rely on the advice of its attorney regarding Arizona's open meeting law, and for that person to properly guide the mayor and council when an issue must be discussed in closed session. Also, let me say that in my view, someone on this council or a person authorized to be present during an executive session leaked confidential information to the public in violation of their oath of office and sworn affirmation during a closed session. I hope the person that had shown such a lack of integrity recognized the shame he or she brought upon the city and our citizens, and has the courage to step down from the position of trust they currently occupy. You have completely lost the confidence of this community and this council. My last comment is regarding the conduct of the news media during this unfortunate episode. We expect our news media to be even-handed and not to take sides on issues it is reporting. I spoke to many people over the past few months, and one gentleman's comment to me was similarly expressed by many others, that being, it appears our news media is in the bag for the recall. I can only say that if I were in the news business, I certainly would not want my organization to be labeled as biased. Objectivity and fairness in reporting are what people need to give them the necessary information to help them make decisions on the many important issues they face. Let's hope the failure of the recall has been a lesson for our local news media. Lastly, forgiveness is a God-given virtue if we're willing to express it. I pray we do forgive and receive the Lord's grace and healing, which is so greatly needed now in our community. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
That's all, Mayor.
Move on to the consent agenda. We have items A through O. Does anybody want to pull anything from consent? Does anybody want to pull anything from consent? Very well, I'll entertain a motion for the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 9A through 9O.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Now, item 10 is the consent ordinance.
Adoption of ordinance number 2024-1854, approving city contract number 2024-176, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving a parking lot lease agreement between the city and Focaria LLC.
Well, I for one am not going to support this ordinance. As we've heard from the previous presentations, we have a lot of very high priority financial requirements coming forward to the city. Having extra parking and contracting with a local LLC is in the category of what I consider a want, not a need. So even though it would be convenient to have some extra parking spaces, I think we have to keep our focus on the things that this city really needs to be done and eliminate some of the conveniences that have an impact on our general fund and our ability to fund the things that are essential. So my personal opinion is, I'm not going to support this.
Mayor and council, if I could just say that we do have our interim deputy city manager, Joe Baines, here to speak about any questions regarding the agreement or anything else council may want to ask. We're happy to give some background or information if you'd like it.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I was just looking at the packet here, and it says for the amount of $12,000 and zero cents, and then it says $10,250. I was just a little confused. Thank you.
As Tyler said, interim deputy city manager, Joe Baines. Initially, we were going to take all 27 spaces, and then the owner requested to have four reserved for them. So we made the adjustment on one end, but evidently, we missed it on the other. So it's $10,250.
Okay. And then, did we get some kind of an appraisal or something so that we're paying market value?
We did. What we did is we used our real estate administrator, Brian Sparks, and then they had a real estate professional that we kind of met in the middle. We did have a comp, being the parking garage, which is similar, although it's covered. So yes, we did do a comparative study.
And this is going to be mainly for city employees, so that it opens up the spaces in our parking lot here for public?
Yeah, councilmember Rusing, that's correct. It'll be employee parking. It's gated, so there'd be a code that would be for city employees, so it would free up space over here.
And so for the public, this is the parking place just north of the Raven on Cortez. It used to be part of the Foothills Bank parking place. I would just like to say, parking is a premium, as you know, downtown. It's not unusual for private parties or governments to lease parking, like New York City, for example. If you look at Prescott Valley, the Toyota Finley Center, they have a lease for that parking lot for parking there. It's like half a million a year. So I think we just have to be realistic, and if it can keep people, our employees, from having to park on the street, I certainly support this.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, mayor. Joe, I have a question regarding what kind of brought on looking at this parking in the first place. I think about a meeting like today where we have a lot of folks here, we have auxiliary usage of another building for people who want to observe this meeting. I wonder if people, you know, were trying to come to this meeting and couldn't find parking, and that discouraged them from being able to participate in this meeting. That's one thing that I think about. And I also think about looking forward. We haven't yet consolidated all city services to this building, is my understanding. Is that correct, Joe?
That's correct.
So what are the additional departments that we're looking to bring into this building?
We saw community development that needs to come over here, as well as finance, part of finance.
Do you have an idea of how many employees that roughly represents?
I would say roughly 20.
Okay. So that would be 20 more, in theory, 20 more cars that might be in this parking lot?
That's probably a little bit more than that, Councilman Montoya, because we still have the second floor, which is just being finished up. It's going to move more fire personnel and some additional finance. So yes.
So while I certainly appreciate and respect the mayor's need to be fiscally prudent at all costs, I think that this is something that we need to do in the instrument of trying to make sure that people can attend council meetings and that city staff can still go about and do their jobs here. I think I for one like the idea of what we've been doing in consolidating city services into a single building. One of the things I heard about during their study session today with the fire department was they talked about the gains that they're making as a team and a leadership team by working side by side. So given that we're going to be achieving not only that within departments, but across departments, and reducing siloing, which is a big challenge within any government, but especially local government, I think it makes sense. And based on the comp information that you provided, Councilmember Rusing, I think it makes sense in that capacity, too. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, mayor. Joe, so I come down here just about every day, and I do see a lot of open parking out there. What percentage of the time do you think that we are in need, other than the days of the council?
Mayor Protem, can you tell me? It's typically going to be a council day with a fairly heavy agenda, but again, we still have some people we need to move over here. So in the future, I think those days are going to be more and more where we have a capacity issue. And I also want to point out, too, I did look at three other sites and met with other people for a longer-term solution. This is a year-to-year type of solution as this potentially develops. But we did look at other spots, and we do have some other feelers out for future, because we won't need it.
Can I ask you, will you be fencing that area? Are some of these vehicles going to be left there overnight?
Yes, we probably would have some that would stay overnight, some of the fire vehicles. And it is fenced currently all the way around, and then it's got a gate on the alley side.
Is it a high fence? I didn't think it was.
No, it's a pretty low fence, like a two-foot fence, maybe, but it does have a perimeter fence.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, mayor. As I've studied this issue, I think it's important that we try to make our city council meetings as accessible to the public as we can. And I really see this as more of a benefit to the public and those that have a desire to attend our meetings. We have an elderly population. We have a lot of people with disabilities. If we don't provide additional parking adjacent to this facility, it would force people to either not attend or have to walk a long ways. And I think that's putting an undue burden on some people in our community that would find it difficult to walk. We've already received numerous complaints in the year we've been here, how we put the council chambers on the third floor. People are unhappy about that. They think it should be more accessible on the first floor. So I think we should try to make access to government meetings as easily accessible as possible, and I'm definitely in favor of this parking.
Councilman Gaborji.
Over the last few months, I've heard a number of complaints about parking here, so I'm glad you're being proactive. I got a question on the numbers. You said it was, there was 27 spaces, but the owner wanted to keep four, so we're down to 23 spaces?
That's correct.
And that's $10,250 per?
Per year.
Year. So that's $445 per parking space.
Yes.
Okay.
And please refresh my memory, how long is the lease for?
It's one year. It can continue on. It can extend year by year until such time as it becomes developed.
So pretty short term?
Correct.
If we need to change it.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, mayor. Just one other question. Storing of cars, you just mentioned the fire department. I've been here on the weekends and seen some cars around. How many cars are we normally storing for the city use?
There's probably about five that are used during working hours but are here overnight, five or six.
Any public comment?
No, mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move to adopt consent ordinance, item 10A.
Second.
Please vote.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item 11A.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 6 bar liquor license application from, excuse me, John Alexander Phillips, applicant for the prep kitchen, location 402 West Goodwin Street. The application fees have been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Is the applicant present? Come on up, just like to ask about your expanded plans here, but I think it's just your kitchen, right?
I didn't hear what he said.
Mr. Phillips?
You want to tell us about your expanded use of your kitchen, or tell us about your...
Yeah, what the purpose is that we're the owners of the shopping center also. And councilmember Kathy Rusing is familiar with, the space used to be occupied by Julianne's Bakery, and Julianne happens to be one of my wife's best friends. We've taken over that spot in addition to 402. That space is 404. It is actually our prep kitchen for the major kitchen we have. And what we'd like to do is move into a pairing where we do wine and also alcohol beverages, whether it be hard liquor and beer into that area. Really, what it does is it's an additive to what we're already doing. It gives us a lot of flexibility. We're not running a bar, okay? But we're required to have a bar license in order to do that.
Well, it's certainly a popular restaurant, and you have that outdoor patio and the other places there, so good luck with your expansion.
Now, we have 17,000 square feet, and as a downtown business owner of four acres, we have adequate parking for all of our customers. We don't rely on you to provide parking, okay?
Good for you. Thank you very much. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right. Does anybody want to make a motion here?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Mayor, I move...
Hold on. Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 278671 for a new Series 6 bar license, bar liquor license application for the prep kitchen, location 402 West Goodwin Street.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. All right, we'll move on to item 11B.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application from Jeffrey Craig Miller, applicant for the Angry Crab Shack, location 520 Miller Valley Road. The application fee has been paid, and the signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Is the applicant present for the Angry Crab Shack? I guess not. I guess they're trying to quiet down that crab. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Mayor Protem, can verbally give it to me. Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 278405 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application for the Angry Crab Shack, location 520 Miller Valley Road.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. Okay, we can move on to the regular agenda. Item 12A, please.
Presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding recommendations from the Workforce Housing Committee.
All right. Thank you, mayor and council. I am Amber Fraser from the city manager's office. I'm also one of the staff liaisons for the Workforce Housing Committee, along with Michael McInnes, who is in the crowd as well. So just a brief history to kick off the conversation. The Workforce Housing Committee was formed by council as you saw the growing workforce housing crisis in our area, and the committee had their first meeting in May of 2023. Since then, the committee has been diligently working to assess the issue and create goals and look at solutions. Today, we're bringing forth the committee's mission and vision definitions, short-term and long-term goals that they have created to align with council's strategic goals for the community. These items were brought to council in a joint study session in January, and the committee took the council's recommendations and updated the documents for your review and hopefully your approval today. So with that being said, we're going to first hand it over to Fire Chief Dura to discuss about how workforce housing is affecting his department, and then Nicole Kennedy from the Workforce Housing Committee will take over the presentation at that point. Thank you.
Mayor and council, hold your fire chief. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this very, very important topic. As a matter of fact, just yesterday, I was interviewed by researchers at Northern Arizona University that are doing a joint project with Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority and us on this particular topic here. It is definitely a very complex and challenging issue, but I do want to also illustrate that in this last hiring class, during the work session, you heard one of our chiefs mention that we had five applicants and one backed out. That gentleman was an eight-year veteran of the Tucson Fire Department with a family of four, and he was unable to find workforce housing, including the one option that we do have at the teacherage over at Taylor Hicks. Very, very high-quality candidate, and it was a loss for sure to see him not be able to move up here into the community. I'm also happy to report that we do have one of our other recruits from this academy living in that teacherage. So that piece of that transitional housing puzzle that we're trying to figure out is working. But it is a very, very complex issue. To give you an idea, that interview lasted an hour and a half, and I think I came up for air maybe about twice. There's a lot to share on this topic, and I'm very, very glad that you're taking it as seriously as you are. It is a long-term issue that is going to require a full community solution. So I just want to express my appreciation on that. If you have any specific questions, be happy to answer those.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, chief. Once again, great presentation. So as the council liaison to the Workforce Housing Committee, we're going to hear a great presentation. And I know it does affect the fire department, as well as the police department and our hospital situation. As anybody that lives here in Prescott, we've seen the escalation of the housing market the last several years, just go out of reach for a lot of people. This has been a really deep dive into this situation through the committee. The committee members are all stakeholders that live in the community, and so it's a very complex situation. And I want to make sure that the public understands that this really is workforce housing. This is for people that are working, they're serving you, they work in our restaurants, they work in our hospitals. We've got several great minds on the committee, looking at all the different options, and believe me, we've talked about everything. So we, as the city, we've decided what we're probably our most... So, we as the city, we've decided what we're, probably our most important role is to try to help facilitate this situation. And we, again, we've had some great ideas. We've invited people up here that have been in the business. It's not going to happen overnight, but we are working on it. And I appreciate you coming here and your testimony to the need. And I'm sure it's echoed through the police and the fire, as well as the hospital, the restaurants, the schools, you name it. Anybody that is making an average income today, it's a very difficult thing to be able to find housing in our area. So, thank you.
Welcome.
And it was a pleasure. It's been a pleasure to be on the liaison. Thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I had a question for you. You alluded to the teach ridge over at Taylor Hicks. I'm curious, from your perspective, being able to leverage that for that recruit that you talked about. Do you see that as, I know that's not, there's no real panacea or silver bullet to solving workforce housing, but do you see further options like that as something that you could leverage within your department?
Absolutely. I do think it's one part of the solution. As you mentioned, you know, in the individual's case, we actually gave him first right of refusal. But fitting a family of four and his wife into a two-bedroom unit is challenging at best. So, it is part of the solution, but I do think that more comprehensive solutions need to be looked at as well.
I appreciate that feedback. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I would just like to stress that if we're going to solve this problem, to be successful, it has to be done the way we're doing it, a local grassroots organization here. We do not want to have the state or the federal government dictate to us what our zoning and ordinances should be. If we're going to solve this problem and have public support, we need to do it locally. Thank you.
Councilman Gamboge.
This is a very important effort, and I salute Mike Phan and his committee for putting together a comprehensive proposal. I think also to realize, you know, we have a number of plans in the community, and one of the efforts that I've been undertaking is to try to integrate those plans because there's synergy to be had. If fire and police live in Prescott, then they're not driving in from Chino and flooding 89, or they're not driving in from PV and flooding 69, so we have less traffic. I think also, I think Amy Bonney just spent half a million dollars to train five policemen because we lost the policemen somewhere else or something else. And I've been promoting some form of ownership for fire and police because if they have skin in the game, they're less likely to leave. They take pride in living in Prescott, and we don't have to undertake the training expenses that we've been doing because we're competing countrywide for fire and police, and they're important to us. And if you were at the study session, you saw what a great job they've done for us. So, I ask the community to support this effort. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this?
We do have public comment. Do you want to receive the presentation before we take that, or would you like to take it now?
We probably ought to go ahead with the presentation. Some of the questions might be answered from the presentation itself.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. On behalf of the committee, I just want to express my sincere appreciation for your commitment to this really important topic. I also want to thank my fellow committee members, many of whom are here today. I also want to thank our city staff. They've been really fantastic to work with and have really helped us move the needle in less than a year. So, we're excited to be able to share our progress to date with you and look forward to continued progress with your support. Okay, so the mission statement that we have come up with together is "To plan and preserve workforce housing solutions to promote a healthy and vibrant community for all." Followed with the vision, "Facilitate housing solutions to attract and retain quality employees and lead to improved service delivery and quality of life for our residents and workforce." As Councilwoman Cantelme touched on a little bit earlier, we want to really clearly articulate what workforce housing is and also what it is not. It is not subsidized housing. It is housing specifically geared to those who are in that gap, if you will, those folks that are earning between 60% and 120% of the area median income. So, that translates to $46,000 to $92,000 for a family of four. So, these are all the people that are serving not just our essential services, but any, really anybody who's earning that income in our community. And as well, the workforce housing definition is the housing that would accommodate those people. So, what is considered an attainable figure based on HUD definition is that no more than 30% of someone's household income is going toward housing, and that includes, it's supposed to include their utilities. Clearly, we're pretty far off the mark if you look at the numbers in our community. And just to give you a tangible example, for the affordability gap, a firefighter should be paying around $1,175. A teacher, about $1,300 to be at that 30% mark. If you look at the average two-bedroom rental rates, they're around $2,000 a month. So, we're pretty far off the mark, not to mention a purchase of a home. So, our short-term goals, I think we've been pretty aggressive, really, for really outlining what we can accomplish in the first three years. And we've actually made some progress toward a couple of them already, which is exciting. So, the very first one, which as you'll hear in the rest of the goals, there's a lot of research required to do this the right way, knowing that it's a long-term issue that's going to require a lot of different solutions over time. We really see the need to invest in a full-time person to manage this task. And so, our goal is to pursue match funding, to identify a person or even find a third-party individual, if not a facilitator position, to act in that role. Number two, we also know that it's important to engage with our community.
Councilwoman Ferworth has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. We had, I thought, previously approved to pursue grants to fund this. So, haven't heard an update. Sounds like that didn't work out. Could you give us a more detailed update?
Well, we're still waiting to hear. So, the grant was submitted. We're expecting to hear something in the next 30 to 60 days, hopefully, as to the results of that grant. So, we're hopeful if that grant does go through, that would fully fund a position such as that. Thank you. Okay, and then the second goal, to formalize a third-party stakeholder organization group. We know that it's important for us to build consensus and community, and we've already heard from a number of different community leaders and stakeholders that are, you know, invested in solutions for this. And so, to formally have a group that can discuss solutions going forward. Number three, the General Plan Housing Element Draft. In January, we completed our presentation to the General Plan Committee on language around the general plan. And we were grateful for the timing, honestly, to be a part of that process. We know that, Council, you're looking forward to having more teeth around the general plan. And so, we considered it a privilege to be a part of that process and have already shared all of those elements with the committee. Number four, to create two separate educational packets. One of those would be geared toward the public to inform them on what kind of housing options, what kind of programs are available to meet the needs of the workforce housing. Second would be the educational packet that's geared towards developers and builders for them to understand what kind of programs are out there and available as well. And then number five, research the best financial program solutions for the city and stakeholders. That really is an element of number four, and again, attests to why we really need someone to help us do all of this research. Number six, the ADU code revision. As you know, the state currently allows for anybody, any property owners, to have a short-term tenant in their current ADUs. And so, this is really what we see to be some low-hanging fruit, that we could immediately provide more housing stock in the community for those who are currently providing these units to short-term rentals, but instead open that up to long-term tenants.
Nicole, Councilwoman Ferworth has another question.
Yes.
Sorry, this is just in follow-up to our study session. We have all seen the horrible news about the city of Sedona opening parking lots to their employees because of the explosion of short-term rentals in their community taking housing stock off. So, we had expressed in our session with you all the fears that we had about code revisions, growing ADUs, and growing short-term rentals in this community. Has there been any updates or thoughts in your deliberations about how might we mitigate those fears or worries so we don't turn into another Sedona?
So, the short term is already allowed. I want to make sure I understood the question. Short term is already allowed. Anybody can offer that, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the community has sent to the council, multiple people have been complaining about the amount of short-term rentals. And the concern was if we changed the code, we would explode that. So, the question is, if you guys had any chances yet to put your minds around, how do we not explode short-term rentals and instead have any code revisions enable us for long-term rental solutions?
Okay, I guess from the perspective, as I'm understanding it, currently, they can do that. So, they could be having a short-term tenant in there at any time because the law allows for that. We can't restrict that, from my understanding, because it's a state law. So, that if we were just to open it up for long-term rentals, the idea would be that we're increasing the long-term supply. I don't know if I'm answering that correctly for you, but...
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Chelsea Walton, Community Development Director. To answer your question, Councilwoman Ferworth, we are looking at them kind of in two separate ways. So, this goal for the committee came as a result in reviewing the code as it sits. Right now, our code says you cannot rent long-term your ADU. We think it's a little bit ridiculous that you can use it as a short-term rental, but you can't use it as a long-term rental. So, when the committee caught on to that, they said, well, let's make that simple change. Now, with all of the community discussions coming about, there is another way that we're looking at the code as it relates to, how do we maybe mitigate or make the short-term rental situation a little bit better in Prescott? And we're looking at it from that perspective, too. But as it relates to this particular goal, the committee's ask was simple. If you're allowed to use it as a short-term rental, we think you should be allowed to use it as a long-term rental to encourage workforce housing, the stock of workforce housing units.
Thank you. That was a lot easier of a solution than I thought. Just inserting words like "long-term" will solve this problem, so thank you.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea, this might still be in your wheelhouse, so you might want to stay up there for a second. I guess along Councilwoman Ferworth's thinking or her logic, I guess I understand the value of what you're talking about. The short-term option already exists. We are legally not able to stop that from happening unless the state legislature takes action, which I don't know if that's likely or not. But we can open it up to long-term. I'm curious, I know other communities like Tucson have kind of contemplated doing ADU work to solve this exact same problem. And they dealt with that exact same concern of how do you do that? And I wonder if, beyond just adding language in there that says, yeah, you can use it for long-term, if there is an other incentivization that we can do to property owners to say, hey, we know that you might want to do... And I speak from personal experience as someone who ran a short-term rental, like on my property. What everyone thinks that an Airbnb side gig is a lot of, like, quick money, but it's actually like a lot more work than just renting to a traveling nurse who's here for, you know, six or seven months. And I know I have, you know, and that's an essential worker that would be part of our workforce. And I know I have clients who have casitas or property either within the city or in the county who've had Airbnbs, who've converted it to be kind of more in the line of workforce housing. And I'm just wondering if there isn't some creative way to approach this problem to incentivize people a bit more than saying, hey, if you're doing this, you're no longer breaking the land development code?
Yeah, absolutely. So, a couple of responses, Councilman Montoya. So, number one, our planning division is monitoring legislation as well as what other municipalities have been doing. The city of Phoenix has adopted some very interesting code changes that we're kind of waiting to see what case law might come out of it. So, the planning division is monitoring those updates as well as what we might do in the future. So, for clarification, what the committee has asked to do will be worked into more of an overarching review of this particular code so that we can make sure that any kind of code revision looks at it holistically, recognizing that, you know, the simple solution in changing short-term to, or allowing long-term is great, but what more can we do in one code revision? So, that as an aside for that particular question. So, with the revision to the code, you should see that as soon as we are comfortable with bringing it forward, watching this legislative session. And we're hopeful that when that code passes, then the committee can work on the incentive side of it. So, Nicole's going to talk about in a moment the workforce housing policy, and incentives would likely work into that policy, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, and I'm glad to hear that.
Mayor Protem.
So, Councilman Montoya and Ferworth, one of the things, we have truly, in the committee, talked about everything, every possibility. And one of the things that we talked about at length is, how do we insert ourselves as a city? What can we do to incentivize, short of becoming a landlord, which we don't, we can't do that? But just as an example, if we were allowed to allow an ADU in an area that maybe in the past it would not have been, but to incentivize somebody that wants one and is interested in not having it become a short-term, maybe we could, and this is just an example, excuse them from the permitting, but then comes the promise of keeping it as a long-term rental obligation. If they violate that, then maybe that gets rescinded. I mean, again, we've talked about a lot of different things, but incentivizing is something that I think we're going to take up as time goes on. And we'll try to figure out what will work to incentivize people to, you know, if they want to build an ADU, keep it as a long-term rental, maybe for what, a year, two years, three years? That's stuff we have to kind of figure out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I love that feedback, Connie. And the other thing, Tyler and the mayor, I know we just got an email from the League of Arizona City and Town. We cannot be the only community struggling with this. So, I wonder if this would be a really timely breakout session for the August meeting if you two would be willing to bring this forward and sponsor it. I think a whole bunch of communities could learn from each other.
Thank you. Okay, so the seventh goal is to create a workforce housing policy for council consideration. As Chelsea mentioned earlier, again, this would require a lot of research. So, I'll be repeating that research word again. But really, we're looking at a few different areas and ways that we could prioritize housing projects within the current city policies. And some of those examples are water management policy, as well as current city codes, such as the Building and Wildland Urban Interface Codes. And then number eight, I'm assuming you're all familiar with the Yavapai County Home of My Own program. Is anyone unfamiliar? Okay, so Yavapai County created a Home of My Own program in 2020, and that was meant to expedite the process of building a new home. And so, since its inception, they've permitted about 50 homes and I think completed around half of those at this time. It saves the homeowner about $10,000 in costs because it's pre-approved plans, it's more efficient, and a little bit more affordable. So, looking at doing something similar in the city could be something that we could also consider some low-hanging fruit. Okay, number nine, community outreach. We really feel like this... We really feel like this is one of the most important things for us as committee members to do. We really are ambassadors to this cause. And so there's a, a lot of work to be done in this area, really educating the community and building consensus around the issue of housing. And so we already have, sorry, just lost my train of thought. We already have a community outreach plan. Mr. John Heaney has been really fantastic in helping us put that together. That will be an important document going forward that should be in your packets. It includes some of the FAQs, and then it will include additional objectives such as social media, PSAs, and so forth. Some of the things that we, we believe are important to address are some of the fears in community. And some of those notably are the nimbyism. You know, people are afraid, rightfully so, that their values of their property are going to go down if a home, a more attainable home is built next door. And yet, at the same time, there is overwhelming research to show that is really not the case. In fact, sometimes property values can even increase. So.
Nicole?
Yes.
Can you explain for everybody what nimbyism is? Okay?
Yes. So nimbyism just stands for not in my backyard. I heard there's the opposite, too. Yimby. Yes, in my backyard. I just learned that this week. And so being able to educate the community that truly it's not about what is built next door to you, more so is how it is built. It's the quality of the design and the quality of the management that makes the difference in maintaining those property values. So education is very important. Another thing is the fear around growth. We hear this a lot in community. People are afraid that Prescott is just running away with rampant growth. But when you look at the numbers, a 20-year history clearly illustrates that our average is less than 2% per year. So really helping to educate and build consensus is one of our most important things. And then number 10, we would like to set up a fund account for workforce housing, just simply to have that line item available to us as we move forward and be able to tackle that need financially.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll admit of this entire thing and the, all the move, movements you would like us to approve today, this was the one that I didn't see enough on in our pre-reading package. So I had questions like, how will this work? How will this be used? Who will control this? Who is the decision authority? And it just is really hard for me to say, conceptually, I'd like you to move forward and work on that, but I'd like you to come back for a move to approve when we can understand the details. So that was my only concern today.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Freworth.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, you know, I think it's important that the city have some skin in the game, and, you know, we have a lot of real estate that's unused, vacant real estate. I was just going to suggest that you take a look at it with our real estate advisor, Mr. Sparks, and see if there, we have something suitable. I don't know if you've already thought of that, just a suggestion.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman Rusi. And we have talked about that. It was actually one of our very first conversations, looking at some of the vacant city land and how we might be able to utilize that going forward for an identified project. So Councilwoman Freworth, if I could answer your question a little bit, I don't know if it's fully to your, to your preference, but it really isn't about a budget yet. You know, this is such a, an early stage for us as a committee, and I think we're trying to be proactive in looking at the long-term needs for the committee. And so it's really just having like a line on the chart of accounts that is allocated to such needs going forward.
But does that have to be done today?
Sure.
Mayor and Council. So it doesn't technically have to be done today, but this would be the line account that if we are to get that grant funding, that grant funding from the Arizona Housing, Department of Housing, thank you, this would be where that money would go. So we have to have somewhere to put any funding, any grant funding that we get. So this would just be a line item to put funding in when and if we get any. So it doesn't have to happen today, but it would need to happen if we are to receive the $200,000. We got to put it somewhere. So that.
So how do you propose to actually spend it? Are you going to be using it for marketing, advertising, hiring, some coordinator to work? And is that coordinator going to be a member of the city staff?
So that $200,000, if we are to receive it, has to go specifically to a housing plan for the community, which would partially go to hiring a coordinator, whether it's a third party or actually hiring someone, we'll have to look at the funding for that, but someone to coordinate that plan. So that money is exactly where that would go. But any future funding, we don't have any in our sights at this point, but the committee would have to determine if we receive funding, where it would need to go, what projects it would need be spent on. And then, of course, we'd have to bring a lot of it to, if not all of it, to council for approval as well.
Yeah, I think my feelings are this is such a complex issue. You're looking at financing concerns, being able to provide some help to acquire down payments, to be able to reduce the overall cost of a mortgage. We're seeing this, there was a big article in the Wall Street Journal about Austin, Texas, where they had highly escalating housing costs, a very restrictive of access to lease and rental stock. But now that the economy has really shifted, they're starting to see a declining cost of new homes and resale homes. There's so many more rental units available in the market that now they're not only flattening out in the cost per month, but now they're offering different incentives to come in and sign a lease. One-year leases are turning into month-to-month. So I know that we have something like, oh, 1,500 multifamily units on the drawing board that are anywhere from three to five units to 400 units and everything in between. So I think we're starting to see the market respond here. And I think because of the complexity of the number of proposals you have, until we can get to a point where we have really kind of a priority list and things that can be done early on and achievable and measurable, bringing on someone to the staff to work on this, I think is a little bit premature. I think I'd like to see a much more well-defined plan of action so that if we do bring someone on, we can measure the progress that's being made and justify the expense of an additional coordinator. Councilman Gambogi.
Just for the public's benefit, this is not the only solution to this problem. We could build another 15,000 houses, but I don't think many of you would go for that. Or according to my math, we could pay starting fire and police salaries another $20,000 a year to make us competitive with places like Denver. And we'd have to do the math because it's not just 20 for the starting, and have to roll all the way up even to the fire chief. I think that you're on track for a viable solution. I'd like to see some numbers applied to those five initiatives you have in here. Do we have to hire a coordinator? We have to have a plan, right, to get the 200K?
Yes.
Do, does that plan mean we have to hire a coordinator?
So we don't have to hire a coordinator, but we, to get the funding, we would have to have a plan and start implementing the plan before 2026, which if we don't have a person designated, then it is staff sharing that burden with their current position.
Have you seen a plan submitted by another community that resulted in getting the 200,000?
I believe this is new. So this isn't a continual reoccurring every year thing they had.
Nothing to benchmark against? See, I, I think, I'm getting the flavor from the council that you'd like to see a little more meat on the bones of, of this proposal, little numbers added to it. So I, that's why I'm asking, is there, can you, can you copy a proposal from another city that would give you a little more comfort among the council members?
Not for this funding, but we have gotten a, I'm trying to think of the word, but a quote from a housing plan organization that does these housing plans and assessments, and that's about 50,000 to 60,000. And then it would take a person to implement that plan. So whether it's hiring somebody, hiring a third party, or current city staff taking that on.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Yeah, I think we're confusing two items here. So I thought we already, as a council, voted to allow them to go and apply for the grant, which, okay, we did. So therefore, we need, what you just informed me is we need a general ledger line item. So if we get the $200,000, we can deposit it. How we spend it, still to be maybe discussed or worked out, but I thought we approved that. So I get the general ledger entry request for that. What I don't get is what is in your proposal here. Set up an account for workforce housing. Objective one, similar to change for the better, recommend council, direct staff to create an account. The minute you tied it to change for the better, where people can throw money in a, in a little register out on the streets, you set up a whole nother dynamic here that takes it into this questions that I originally raised, which is how's the money going to be bribed? How's it going to be accounted for? How's it going to be spent? Who's going to control? The second objective here was explore ways to seek out funding such as donations. And we do have, as we just proved earlier today, an extremely generous community who might very well want to write some pretty good checks to help out getting fire and police and those kind of things. So I just would love, I'm all for accepting, if we are lucky enough to get that grant, accepting the grant, putting it in the bank and working that out. But my concern was the blank, set up this account when you had some pretty creative objectives, and I wasn't sure how this was all going to work yet. That's the elements that I wanted you to work it out and come back so we can then decide how we're going to use all this generous community's money that they may donate.
And Mayor, Mayor, could I, could I speak to that just real quickly?
Sure.
So setting up account, I may be misspeaking, and sorry, Mike, to, to interrupt you, but it seems, it, it seems like this is an item that shows council support for this general direction of workforce housing. The actual hiring of people, spending of dollars, all of those items would have to follow city procurement, coming to council for grant, even putting in for grants receives council approval. So none of those items would change. No dollars would be spent outside of city procurement and parameters as is. But really, this item is to support moving forward. And practically speaking, to receive a grant, we need to put it somewhere, a revenue account, and then to expend it, so.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Mike Van, Chairman of the Workforce Housing Commission. Ditto. We're a mayor's commission. We, we serve at the, at the will of this council, and we do nothing more. We can't spend money. We can't even apply for a grant without your permission. The grant we've applied for was with this council's permission. I think if you'll look, if we don't dig too deep into the semantics of what we're asking to approve, this is really just a guideline. And, and any action of that guideline is going to come back to this mayor and this council for action. That's not action we will be doing on our own in any way, shape, or form. All right, thanks.
Mayor Protem.
Ditto on most of that stuff. But what I wanted to tell everybody is, so setting up the fund, just to clarify that, is just a vessel to receive this grant if we get it. The Workforce Housing Committee can be a recommending body, which is what, exactly what they'll do. I don't, I mean, although we've been in, looking into this for 10 months now, I don't think anybody has a clear picture of how many hours or what it's going to take to administer whatever we end up doing at this point. But as they have said, it, it's going to come in front of us to either accept it or not. We, we have interviewed people that do nothing but workforce housing, and it could potentially be a situation where we help incentivize them to do it and administer it. We just don't know quite yet. So I think we were jumping at the opportunity to get that $200,000, get it secured, and then keep moving on with the committee and to try to figure out how we're going to use that. Again, we have explored everything. And I also wanted to add, too, just for the public, one of the things that we're finding out, think about it, if you're a doctor fresh out of medical school, or you're a nurse fresh out of nursing school, or a fireman for that matter, the biggest hurdle for most of these people is getting over the, the impact of a down payment. Think about that. At today's rates, you, you've got, especially a doctor, probably a million, you know, half a million dollars school loans, I mean, whatever it is, it's very difficult to come up with the money just to have the down payment. So that's something we've considered also. So again, and also the other part of this, this is not going to be a projects-style operation. Nobody's saying we, we need something like the projects in the Bronx, okay? It's going to be a multitude of things. We've talked about a lot of the infill lots. Maybe it's small fourplexes, townhomes, small individual, you know, single-family homes. Somebody even talked about those little mini homes, which some of the ADUs could be basically defined as a mini home. But we're still in the creative process. We're looking at every, you know, possible way. We've got a lot of people, we're all frustrated, we want to move on this thing and get it done, but it's baby steps right now. Thank you.
So Member Rusi.
Thank you. I reviewed the documents, and I just want to thank you for taking this task on. There's many communities that are grappling with the same thing. I just have a few suggestions to think about. Number one, the portable, affordable workforce housing should be located within our Prescott city limits, and the residents should work within our city limits. I think they need to live and work within our city limits. And for example, in the case of a construction, you know, PUSD would be easy, but like construction employees, you know, tend to work in the quad-city areas, but they're very essential. But if maybe the home office was in the city limits, that would help. And then the last one, last suggestion would be, the property should be deemed restricted to affordable workforce housing. Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're getting into the weeds, and I'd like to make a proposal, or a motion, rather.
Before we do that, I would like to take a public comment. Have you concluded your, your presentation, Nicole?
I can breeze through these last couple of things.
Okay.
And then, yes, Mayor. So our long-term goals, you heard a lot of heavy on the short-term. So long-term, we would like to facilitate or partner in creating a tangible product. As we briefly discussed earlier, we have already looked at a few different city-owned parcels, and we're very open to a myriad of solutions there, but knowing that it's a longer-term goal. Number two, we want to create a regional workforce housing strategic plan. One of those items that would fall under that would be our continued research on identifying that number of units needed. We did start out with the city survey, and we, we got a decent response. I think one of the most compelling things from that survey, in my opinion, is that 68% of those employees surveyed have considered moving out of the area because of the housing situation. So I thank you very much for your time and for your support.
All right, public comment.
Kenneth Fittick.
Thank you, Nicole.
Is this on? Okay. Ken Fittick, 114 East Soaring Avenue in Prescott. I wasn't going to comment on this, and I'll try to make my comments brief since I just heard a lot more information, and we don't get the details that the council gets. But as you consider this, it sounds like you're still in still early stages of this process, although you've been at it for 10 months or 12 months. So with that in mind, I hope you'll consider that.
But my only concern, and maybe the you already looked at this from the federal constitution, state constitution, and how the city attorney addresses these issues, is there a window of opportunity for federal and state to dictate what you do in housing? You call it workforce, but they say, oh, it's affordable housing, and we have squatters that we'd like to bring in, or we have illegals that we'd like to bring into the community. I don't know if that's a legal issue only, but it certainly should be an issue that the council should review as they look at the various options for how you're going to use any money that comes in. Sounds like you're going to put the money and park it for a while if you do get this grant, and there's sounds like a various other ways, maybe to raise other funds. But I was concerned about that. And then I've heard in the news about some of the hedge fund outfits. Probably Prescott is not on our radar screen now, but there are major hedge fund outfits that are looking to invest in communities, and we wouldn't want a Wall Street firm coming in and capturing this community in any way, shape, or form. But they are doing it in the cities, and eventually, Phoenix is going to get here, and the invasion from the south is going to get here. And so all I ask, and maybe it's more of a general thing, not just workforce housing, is that you seriously consider being proactive on how you're going to deal with the invasion that's coming. And as you build more homes, or fourplexes, or townhomes, you're going to leave yourself open, potentially, for, and I'm all for the workforce housing for the critical services, don't get me wrong, but just make sure, in the efforts to achieve that, that legally we don't leave ourselves open as a community for something that's very unwelcome, that's coming our way sooner or later. If you build it, they're coming. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilwoman Cambogie, you want to make a motion?
I move to approve the workforce housing's mission and vision, workforce definition, and workforce housing definition, and to create a workforce housing account in the general ledger. And then I ask them to come back at a later meeting with more details for the overall plan.
There are five items there. Do we need to do five motions?
I'm confused here.
We need five motions?
You can approve it all in one, which is what Councilwoman Cambogie just did.
City Attorney.
I'll second it.
Yeah, it can be, ultimately, this is policy. It can be done one motion or multiple motions. But the way I heard Councilmember Cambogie was that he was moving to approve three of them at this time.
Why don't we just approve all five?
Okay, so which which three are you moving to approve?
The move to approve the mission, vision statement, and workforce definition, workforce housing definition, and then to create the account that Amber was asking for. So those things I think we can do. I think the other two require a little more detail.
So that's number?
So that's just the last one?
Five minus three is the other two.
Can you go by the numbers, which which one you're?
I move to approve one.
Motion is second, please vote.
I'm a yes, Sarah.
Thank you. Passes six, one.
Mayor, I'd like to move or make a motion that we approve items number two, three, and five.
Second.
Three. Yeah, I think I can vote for that.
Is that a proper way to do this?
Councilwoman Forworth, that's fine.
Okay.
You guys can do it however you want. Is that a yes? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't see it yet. Passes six, one. So all five have been approved.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, moving right along. Item 12B.
Adoption of ordinance number 2024-1855, approving city contract number 2024-197, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the exchange and transfer of real property between the city of Prescott and the Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority.
Mayor and Council, Fire Chief Olguendura, it's been a familiar day with you. I also want to point out that Assistant Chief John Fedema from CAFMA is also in the audience. Chief Freitag unfortunately had a personal appointment that couldn't be avoided. We're bringing forward to you today the exchange of two fire stations, one owned by the city at Williamson Valley and Iron Springs, and one owned by Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority on Sixth Street. Both of these facilities have been operated by the opposite response partner for over 15 years. As I mentioned during my work session to you, Station 51 actually runs quite a bit of calls in the city limits, but also quite a few calls on Iron Springs and up Williamson Valley, which is in Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority's district. That's unlikely to change, and that is just one of the reasons why this makes sense. The second reason is Station 72, owned by Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, is located in the heart of the city. It's actually our busiest engine company, also a condition that is very unlikely to change in the future. Chief Freitag and I have been talking about this, as well as our senior staffs, and we feel it's the most prudent and responsible decision at this point to ask for an exchange and the authorization to swap those stations so that either entity can do the upgrades and renovations, some of which I displayed to you in the work session. In this case, usually, as the mayor points out, when I wear a tie, I ask for money. In this case, I am wearing a suit to bring you money. The two appraisals that resulted in a $550,000 net check being transferred to the city of Prescott due to the difference in valuation. Our real estate advisor, Brian Sparks, is also here if you have any questions about how those valuations were arrived at. But at this point, I open up for questions and any other further comments.
Councilwoman Cambogie.
Where, what's the location of the two stations? The one we own and the one they own?
So the one that we currently own is at Williamson Valley in Iron Springs, 1700 Iron Springs.
And what number is that?
That is Station 51. So it's operated by Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority. And then the other one is at 536th Street, which is Station 72, which houses our engine company, 72, and it's owned by Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority.
It's it's located where?
536th Street, so it's.
Sixth Street?
Sixth Street, yes, sir.
So they own both stations?
No, we own the one on Iron Springs, but they operate an engine company there. We, they own the station on Sixth Street, and we operate the engine company there.
So we get Sixth Street, and they get Iron Springs and?
That is correct.
Williamson Valley.
That is correct.
Councilwoman Forworth.
I think you're on the wrong item, Mayor. If you click your blue details button, it'll take you to the next item.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I see that it says here 550,000 transferred to the general fund. Is there any way this money could be earmarked and kept in your budget so that you can start on remodeling stations or implementing your strategic plan? Because I look at this as the first move of implementing the master plan, strategic plan for our community.
I think I'll invite interim city manager Tyler Goodman to comment on that.
Thank you, Chief. And yes, Councilmember Rusing, absolutely, this can be allocated and budgeted. We're already in budget talks now as staff, so this certainly can go into that conversation as helping us get to those next steps with the fire department and the Capitol needs.
Would that be okay with you, Chief?
Very much so.
All right, thank you.
Well, I know one of the problems we're having with all the parking challenges here at City Hall is the fact that we never contemplated moving all of the administrative and other facilities and leadership into City Hall from the fire department. I mean, you had your administrative offices at Station 51, and then a lot of them were down at, I think, 72 as well.
Yep.
So now moving all those vehicles has created more of a challenge. Is there any anticipation or plan to relieve that?
Yeah, I'm really glad you brought that up. So in that fire station plan that we discussed at the one o'clock work session, one of the things that you did not see is a consideration for fire department administration to be included in one of those fire stations and an additional cost of around $5 to $7 million. As you mentioned, the Iron Springs location was our technically our headquarters. We had administrative staff at Station 71. We also had and still do have administrative staff at our training center. So in three locations, we had three separate administrative silos, which caused quite a bit of problems. We're also out of a room at Station 51. We had more than two-thirds of the staff working out of a basement, which is obviously not an optimal location as well. And this allowed us the opportunity to leverage this facility here to offset that $5 to $7 million. Now, granted, it's still $5 to $7 million of taxpayer expenses, we just spent it differently. I don't want to say I'm shifting money here. But the real key is, as well, even though we have those three to four staff vehicles that get parked here overnight, regardless of that, city staff would have occupied that space, whether it was our department or another department, which would have had the same parking impact, it just wouldn't have had a city of Prescott sticker on the side of the vehicle.
So where do you, where do you anticipate having this administrative location? Primary location?
Yeah, the primary location will be here at City Hall on the second floor in the space that's currently being finished. We're currently in the finance location temporarily, waiting for the final completion of a space basically directly below these chambers.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was similar to Councilmember Rusing's question, but it was kind of maybe for Mark Woodfill. It was my understanding that we had a policy, and maybe Tyler could answer, that we had a policy that any city sold assets were going to go directly towards paying off City Hall, and that that has been our main policy for the last two or three years. And so it was my understanding that these funds should probably be applied to paying off the internal debt for this building, because that was the decision that we made and agreed to.
I would respond by saying it's completely up to council's direction and discretion, I think, to do that. I don't remember there being a a policy except direction given at the at the sale and receipt of funds for any city property up to this point. You're right, in practice, that has been done, but staff's happy to receive any direction council would like to give on on this.
I certainly remember that that was the consensus of the council.
I agree. Yes, it was. That's why I'm bringing it up, because.
It was all real estate.
When I saw this on the agenda, I rate that raised a question for me that that was the commitment that we had made as a council, that we were going to pay off that internal loan to pay off City Hall.
And and I can add that, to be honest, if it's general fund, if it's coming in, it will it will offset one way or the other. So it's it's really, again, council's discretion, if you'd like it to go to paying off that internal loan for City Hall, we can absolutely do that, which would then free up equivalent funds to then be moved over. Either way, I think it's going to be helping the the city and the fire department.
Mayor, I have a question.
It's probably a conversation that we should have as a council, but not today. It's just I wanted to raise the issue.
Noted. Councilmember Rusing.
Thanks for bringing that up. Councilwoman Moore, I would like to ask our finance director what the the balance is on the internal loan for the purchase of City Hall. Is he here?
Mark's not here.
Oh, okay. All righty, thank you.
We do not have public comment, Mayor.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance of the mayor and council, or pardon me, move to approve ordinance number 2024-1855.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Passes seven, zero.
Right. Item 12C, adoption of resolution number 2024-1875, approving the amended 2022 water management policy and approval of additional recommendations from the mayor's commission on water policy review and monitoring.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Item 12C, adoption of resolution number 2024-1875, approving the amended 2022 water management policy and approval of additional recommendations from the mayor's commission on water policy review and monitoring.
Good evening, Council. Brian Reese, Water Resources Environmental Services Manager with the Public Works Department for the city. And today, you might recall during the February 27, 2024 voting meeting, the council determined that the proposed Resolution 2024-1875 and the proposed 2024 water management policy should be revised to be an amendment of the 2022 water policy and not a replacement with the 2024 policy. As requested, staff has went back, and we revised Resolution 2024-1875 to reflect an amendment of the 2022 water policy. The 2022 water policy document itself was revised to have Section 1A added to it, summary and amendment of revisions, which outlines the changes that were made to the 2022 policy. Other than that addition of that section, there was only two other minor changes made to the document in order to reflect more clarity on one word and to to reflect the the new name for the document in another section. Additional recommendations on from the mayor's commission on water resource review and monitoring remain unchanged from the presentations done at both the February 14 and the February 24 meetings. And that's basically what I have for you today. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or concerns from the council? Any public comment?
We do not have public comment on this one.
Okay, so in essence, this is just correcting some of the recommendations made in the previous proposal and making it just an amendment to the 2022 policy. And then I think a couple of wording changes, right?
Correct. Yeah, the main the main difference in the document was just a summary section at the beginning in order to to introduce it as an amendment to the 2022 policy and to summarize those changes.
All right, then, I'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2024-1875, approving the amended 2022 water management policy and approval of additional recommendations from the mayor's commission on water policy review and monitoring. Second.
That was beautiful. We have a motion, second, please vote.
Passes seven, zero.
All right, now we're proceeding to item 12D.
Presentation and discussion regarding an appeal of the Prescott Preservation Commission's denial of a 55-room hotel on Whiskey Row at 136 to 140 South Montezuma Street. And I think Joe's going to introduce, and then Kaylee will do her presentation.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, just quickly, I wanted to touch on the procedural posture of the council in this, because I don't think that this council has seen an appeal from a historic preservation commission. And I wanted to address kind of what you're looking at in doing so. So obviously, the Historic Preservation Commission is tasked with certain things, and sometimes they're a recommending body, but in this case, they're not a recommending body. They have the authority under our code to review certain types of permits to approve or disapprove. And in this case, they disapproved a permit that you will see. When the appeal was done, council will now be looking at this case de novo, which is just a standard of review. So you've heard in criminal cases, abuse of discretion standard or substantial evidence standard. De novo means you will be analyzing the evidence you see today and that you have in your packet and making a decision without. and making a decision without any deference to the Historic Preservation Commission. Now, they can be persuasive, but they're not afforded a certain type of deference under the standard of review. So council will hear the evidence and serve as a quasi-judicial body. So keep in mind that in doing so, the evidence is what you have before you, what you hear today and what you have in your packet. If you have any other facts or information that influences your decision in one way, it should be shared with the rest of council. So at the end of this hearing, you'll be deciding to affirm the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission or to reverse the decision. If you affirm, then the application will be denied, a reversal will allow it to move forward. And if you affirm in part or reverse in part, it will go back to the Historic Preservation Commission according to your direction at that point. So I just wanted to address, like I said, the procedural posture. If you have any questions on that, let me know, but otherwise, I think we're prepared to move forward.
All are aware of the process that we're going to do today, but I just wanted to provide some additional information for the public. So our staff is going to provide a presentation, as City Attorney Joseph Young just stated. We will then allow the applicant to address the council. Based on his appeal, staff will follow up with anything, and then the applicant can rebut, and then council will discuss, and then we can open up to public comment at that time. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Kaylee Nunez. I'm the Historic Preservation Specialist for the city. So today, I'm going to present a condensed version of the presentation I gave to Preservation Commission last August regarding the proposal for Prescott Plaza Hotel. So quick trip down memory lane, so top left is the building in question in 1905. Now, it was rebuilt in the late 1960s following a roof collapse from a snowstorm. So below is an artist's rendering of the hotel proposal. The current building is not on the National Register, however, it would be eligible at this point due to its age. Though it's not architecturally significant, it is harmonious with Whiskey Row in terms of scale, massing, and style. So it doesn't compete with neighboring National Register structures. Oops. Okay, so just to go over the proposal again, the proposed hotel site is at 136, 138, and 140 South Montezuma. Again, a five-story, 55-bedroom boutique hotel. So the front of the hotel extends three stories high at the back of sidewalk. That height is maintained 20 feet back from the front facade to facilitate an open-air terrace. Beyond that, it reaches its full five-story height. The top of the fifth story is at 48 feet, and then there is an elevator overrun on top of the fifth floor that tops out at approximately 53 feet. So the exterior finish will be primarily brick veneer. It also features four sandstone friezes on the front, which are like decorative panels, black wrought iron balconies, fabric awnings, and a suspended portico above the front entrance with signage. So here's an elevation, again detailing heights and width, 47 and some change to top of fifth floor, 52 and some change to top of the elevator overrun. The building will be approximately 50 feet wide. So here's a perspective rendering from the northeast, kind of like you're standing near the crosswalk of Montezuma and Gurley. So southern and eastern elevations, northeast and southeast perspective renderings, as well as a section of the courthouse. So the heights denoted on this are relative to the sidewalk level of the project site, so if you could think like right outside the Harley-Davidson shop. The roof of the courthouse is 74 feet, roof of post office 75, St. Michael's 43, and the palace 42 feet. Okay, so analysis, so as with the commission meetings, a full staff report was released prior to this meeting, where I reviewed the project proposal against the city's historic master plan, as well as a state analysis against the national guidelines. So to summarize, there are five principal elements that I reviewed this project proposal against: materials and details, windows and doors, siding, building size and scale, and miscellaneous elements, particularly demolition. So the project meets the master plan criteria for materials and details, including the incorporation of masonry on all facades. It largely meets the criteria for doors and windows. It partially meets the criteria for siding. The step back at the third floor is not typical for the district. The project does not meet the criteria for building size and scale, which bears particular importance. So though the bulk of the structure tops out at 48 feet, there is the elevator overrun that goes to 53, which will be visible from certain areas on Whiskey Row and the plaza. So the district guidelines do not contemplate buildings beyond three stories. The proposed design is out of scale and massing with other buildings on Whiskey Row, being considerably taller than the neighboring structures, as well as proposing to be the tallest building on Whiskey Row. The architectural features, though they're compatible in style, they'll appear to be large in comparison with the more intimate scale of Whiskey Row. Also, wanted to mention that the district guidelines include a list of threats to character, one of them being the demolition of historic resources to make way for larger commercial and business uses, which could degrade the scale of the district and result in loss of historic resources. So a five-story building could create an adverse precedent on Whiskey Row where additional out-of-scale projects are proposed in the future. So I'm going to gloss over this one. I felt it was important to quantify the massing of other buildings within the district, so I calculated the aspect ratios, which is just the width to height of buildings. So generally, the wider the building, the taller it can be. Most buildings in the district are one and a half to two times as wide as they are tall. So if you take the average of other notable buildings in the district, 25 to 36 feet high would be a more fitting height for this proposal, being that it's 50 feet wide. So this would put it closer to a three-story maximum. So I also sent the final submittal package to the State Historic Preservation Office, we'll call them SHIPO, for a courtesy evaluation. SHIPO's architect, Susan Lawson, applied three standards from the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So those were standards three, nine, and 10. I'm not going to read them in entirety unless you want me to, but what she found is standards three and 10 were met in entirety. The proposal doesn't create a false sense of history, nor would risk impairment to the district if removed. However, standard nine was not met. The place and use are appropriate. The design density and respectfulness of the character of the district are challenged, the rhythm of Whiskey Row interrupted by the height of the hotel. And she did make a suggestion to match heights of extent adjacent horizontal features and to break the facade into smaller elements. Public input, so prior to the voting or study and voting sessions, we sent notices to all study and voting sessions for Preservation Commission. We sent notices to all property owners within a half mile of the courthouse. That was about 1,200 mailings each time. There have been four articles published in the Courier regarding this proposal. We had about 135 responses received back in the summer. Breakdown of input, 131 opposed, four in support. Most prevalent concerns, height, negative impact on the character of the plaza, parking and traffic. Also, there were several suggestions of an alternative location, saying, "We like the project, not at this location." In conclusion, the Preservation Specialist, myself, recommended that the existing facade be maintained or rebuilt in a manner that complements the scale and style of surrounding buildings, as well as keeping overall building height within the more intimate scale of Whiskey Row, so a three-story maximum. The project did not meet those recommendations, and staff recommended denial as a result. The Preservation Commission unanimously denied the proposal on August 11, 2023. And that's all I have. It's open for questions.
Thank you. I'd like to stress the word "district." This is a historic preservation district. It's a legal entity. We have many districts in the area. We have fire districts, road districts, water districts. And if you live in those districts, you have certain obligations above and beyond people that don't live in those districts. For example, if you live in a fire district, you have to pay more in taxes. I live in a wildland, wildland urban interface district, which means I have a higher fire risk, so I had to build my house out of fireproof materials and meet certain codes. So this property is in a district, and it looks to me like the applicant has made efforts to meet certain criteria, but he still hasn't met the biggest criteria, which is scale and massing. And as you pointed out in the letter from the architect from the state, that he met some of the criteria, but he hasn't met standard number nine. So technically, we could deny this on standard number nine, but then he's certainly welcome to come back and reapply if he's met standard number nine. Is that true?
We would actually, so standard number nine is the national preservation standard, which certainly is important, and it informed, the national guidelines informed our local master plan, but what holds more power essentially is the Chapter Eight of the Historic Preservation Master Plan, and that's this slide, this is where I cite the five sections, there's more sections within that chapter, but the five main sections that I reviewed it against, and one of them is building size and scale, so in which it did not meet criteria. So we'd more, you know, compare it against our local standards first.
And I would jump in and say we have to compare it to our local standards. So Chapter Eight of our Historic Preservation Master Plan is your guiding document. So that information, and sorry, Kaylee stated how it meets it and how it may not meet it, but that is kind of your guideline and the design criteria that you're using to decide today.
Mayor, Councilman Campoggi.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Historic Preservation Society with my good friend Mike King, and there was a lot to consider, and there's a lot to consider here. I have a very narrow focus, because I've been wrestling with this term "five stories." When you look at five stories up, it says anywhere from 55 to 75 feet. This is really five floors. So you've had visuals to this, help me again remember, this building is how tall?
Well, the most of it is 48 feet, but there is a portion that goes to 53.
Okay.
And we don't exempt like mechanicals, you know, enclosures, we don't exempt them from a preservation standpoint.
And how tall is the courthouse?
It's 75.
And the post office?
74.
Yeah, you made the statement that this would be the tallest building on Whiskey Row.
On Whiskey Row, yes.
What's the next tallest building?
It would be the, actually, St. Michael's.
And how tall is that?
That's 43, and the palace is 42.
Okay. One last question. Did you say you can see the elevator shaft from Whiskey Row?
You would probably be able to see it if you're standing far on the southern or northern side. If you're like standing more in front of the hotel, you wouldn't see it.
Okay.
But certainly, if you stood across the street, like near the courthouse, yes. So I made the differentiation, yes, not the whole structure tops out, 53, but some of it does.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. So Kaylee, I've talked to tons and tons of people in the downtown area. As I've said repeatedly, I live in the downtown area. I live in a historic home. I've lived in several historic homes. I've owned several historic homes in the downtown area. You know, and I got to tell you, I've struggled with this myself, because understanding, we want to preserve Whiskey Row going into the future. It's part of Prescott, it's really what Prescott is known for. I'm not opposed to a business going in there. I think every business on Whiskey Row can use a shot in the arm with what that hotel would generate. And I would like to personally, if we go back to your analysis here, if you look in, you know, the first one, materials and detail, you're saying he largely meets the criteria. Windows and doors largely meets the criteria. Siding largely meets the criteria. Building size and scale does not meet the criteria. Let's move on to the miscellaneous elements. Meets the criteria, as the current building is a non-contributor. So, oh, that's in terms of the demolition, I'm sorry. But I would like to personally consider a hotel, this man's hotel, just not that one. If there's any possibility of urging the owner to go back and bring this massing down, that seems to be, you've had three professional organizations bring that up. I think that's been the argument for everybody I've spoken to in the downtown area. I just live a couple blocks from here. But as far as what you can contribute to our community, I'm all over that. If you can get the size right, I would be willing to contemplate something that fits better on Whiskey Row. And I hope you'll do that going into the future. And I know, I've been in all these meetings with this, I'm the liaison for the Historic Preservation Committee, and as I said, I'm a builder. I have renovated historic buildings for 40 years, and I know what's happening underneath some of those buildings, and it takes a lot of money to be able to keep historic Whiskey Row going. So I'm going to urge that you go back to the drawing board on that and see what you can come up with that would be more compliant to probably 90% of the people in this room. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Yeah, traffic and parking, how about that? They don't address. Thank you, Mayor. I know that Mayor Protem currently serves in the Preservation Commission as the council liaison, and when this proposal was being presented twice previously, I was at that time the council liaison to the Preservation Commission and attended those meetings. And I just feel that the project as it stands now is not significantly different than what was originally proposed. He has made some adjustments, but I still feel it does not, like it says, does not meet the criteria for size and scale and massing. I think that would just stick out like a sore thumb on Whiskey Row and would be a blight in a downtown district.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I think a lot of good comments have been made by various members of council. I think one component that I'm kind of looking at this from is, you know, we ask people to serve on Preservation Commission. When we select those people to serve on a commission, like a lot of our commissions and boards that they serve on, they're vetted by council to make sure that they're qualified to do that work of doing that vetting process. And while I've been on council for the past two years, I can only recall one instance where we overrode a recommending body. And in that case, we did so because it was overwhelming sentiment that we got from the community that was going to be impacted by that particular project. And I think in this case, we have the opposite. You know, the overwhelming sentiment of the community is not in favor of this project. And the other thing I would say, from my perspective, if council is going to go about overruling a recommending body's, you know, decision that they bring forward, especially in this case, one that was unanimous, we need to really have an extraordinary set of circumstances. in this case, one that was unanimous, we need to really have an extraordinary set of circumstances that we're saying, gosh, this really makes a lot of sense. And I think, you know, to Mayor Protem's, you know, point of, it is, it would be, there is economic benefit potentially to this project, but we can't lose sight of what the district really spells out in the guidelines that we're looking at. And I think that is how Preservation Commission weighed this item and considered it. And I think I'm not, I don't see compelling evidence or an extraordinary set of circumstances that says, yes, we need to overrule a recommending body here.
Councilmember Rusing.
I agree with Councilwoman Moore's statement. It will stick out like a sore thumb. That's not the purpose of a building in the historic district. And my stance is, I stand with the Preservation Commission. They've done a lot of work on this, and if it doesn't meet scale and massing, it doesn't meet scale and massing.
I too agree with the sentiments being expressed today. I view our role here as representing the public, but also being a watchdog for our future. And this block is the most iconic block probably in northern Arizona. And, and our standards are very clear, and I too do not support this proposal.
You know, I'll make a couple of statements. Knowing that the proposal fails to meet the requirements for massing and scale is certainly a legitimate area of concern for this project itself. Also creating a precedent that if it were approved, then future developments could use such an allowance to do future increases of massing and scale. Now, I know that we don't require parking for businesses down on Whiskey Row, but let's face facts. If you've got 55 rooms here and 55 vehicles, and the staff that's going to be working here, it's going to have a huge impact on our parking requirements. That's not, and even though that's not a criteria for approving or denying, it's a practical reality. Additionally, over the period of the possible construction of this project, we'd have to close the fire lane. Now, as far as I'm concerned, that puts the rest of the businesses on that row at risk. And even though we've heard that there are modern construction techniques that would assure demolition wouldn't impact these buildings adjacent on either side, here's another fact that we have to face. These buildings are old, and they're much more fragile than a typical building that would be next to a demolition area. So there's just so many reasons why this is not appropriate. And I'll stick with the criteria that you've mentioned. The scale and massing do not meet the criteria. So I think it's pretty clear where I'm going to vote on this. But we'll, I think at this point, we'll allow Mr. Grissette to make his rebuttal presentation.
Yes, and one more thing I just want to reemphasize is the scale and massing in the context of Whiskey Row. Yes, in the context of the district is important, but because Whiskey Row is so iconic, there are so many old buildings on there, the majority of them on the register, that warrants its own context. So just wanted to affirm that, so. Okay.
Mr. Grissette, do you want to?
Councilman Moore, did you have additional comment?
No, Mayor, sorry.
No. Mayor Protem.
Guys, that'll be the second presentation, if you're back there still.
Jim, Jim Grissette, I'm the applicant and the person appealing right now. And by the way, I'd like to express my appreciation to Mayor Phil Good and the city council for the opportunity to appear today. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Rounds of Rounds Consulting, who's going to speak in detail about the economic aspects of the hotel.
Mayor, members of the council, I volunteer to go before my friend Jim to, any boos can go towards me, and then soften it for Jim. He actually cares about this community a lot. Nope, that's right.
Please let the.
We recommended that he consider seeking incentives based on the extra economic value and what would be brought to the community. There's a lot that needs to be done in the community, looking at the fiscal situation, the economic development situation, the next city manager is going to have his work cut out for him. We've, we're finishing up our detailed analysis of Prescott Valley. A lot of it is referencing coordination with Prescott. And so we wrote a report that could have been five pages long, but we wanted to write it partly for just giving some advice to our friends here in Prescott. We've done lots of work here. We've worked on the rodeo analysis. We've worked on hopefully bringing horse racing here at a more significant scale. We're also the economic advisors to the League of Cities and Towns. And so one thing that we already offered your staff, since you covered housing so much, we've done more economic analysis on housing affordability than anybody else in the state before you hire somebody. I'll be happy to volunteer some time and work with your staff and come up with, come up with some solutions that could be, that could work. And yes, that was a kind offer. We would normally charge quite a bit for that. So again, booze towards me, be kind towards Jim. We did not analyze, well, we analyzed, but we didn't get into, into the report, and we don't want to get into now, any issues related to property rights, that's definitely potentially could come up. But the one thing that I ask before I go to the next slide, and I'm looking at the picture, is, yes, there's been a lot of recommendations. We already know how this vote's going to go. I still wanted to come here and talk to the community, partly to introduce myself because I want to be seeing you a lot as we're working on these additional tourism activities. We're expecting to have double or to triple the AOT budget starting next year. We already designed it with the governor and Office of Tourism. We took on the project with the requirement that we spend most of the money on rural Arizona, because that's always forgotten. So there's going to be lots of opportunities for additional tourism. So we'll be in front of the council and the mayor and the city manager, hopefully quite a bit over the next year as some of these things go forward. When we talked about, when there was discussion about alternatives for the site, I do not believe that the state, the person that provided feedback from the state provided any financial analysis. You can't just necessarily say, let's lop off a story, or let's maybe reduce the number of rooms. The stuff has to work out financially. That has to be a consideration. You can't tell somebody, here's what we're willing to approve. You got to scale it back to the point that you're going to go broke. You can't say, let's build a hotel somewhere else when you own the particular property that you're trying to develop. So let me just hit on the economic development items. Again, we, we work extensively with a lot of different groups. We've worked in northern Arizona, we've worked in central Arizona. A lot of tourism, $2 million in your budget every year right now is from our work on the revenue distribution that we worked with the League of Cities on. When it came to the income tax cut, $2 million. We've looked out for the cities more than any other entity, and it's impacted our reputation, and I've been very happy to take that on as being somebody that looks out for our local communities, because a lot of economists don't like to go outside the greater Phoenix I feel like this is a unique opportunity, and I feel like you should try to make this work. This is, please, this is something that could be a piece of many things that you're going to have to do over the next handful of years to shore up the local economy. You're going to have housing issues, you're going to have tourism issues, you're going to need to generate tourism activity where people come and stay longer and spend more money. You'll need a new type of tourist that's willing to come into the area. You'll have to coordinate with a lot of others. You have to balance that with parking issues and other things like that. But there's a lot that you're going to need to work on. And the worst signal for me right now that I'm most worried about for Prescott is how, how this has devolved into more of a discussion like this rather than an economic discussion. We really should have been briefed on, here's the Preservation Committee's recommendation. Well, if it doesn't financially work, should that be a recommendation? I would say no. It would be, we reject it, not we recommend something that financially can't work. You have to consider what's good for the community. And yes, there are guidelines. The council is, who has to make the decision? And again, this is an opportunity to have a very nice hotel that is going to get other developers excited to come in and revive.
Okay, I'm, ladies and gentlemen.
Let's have some decor in here, please.
We need to take it down, okay? This, that's not how we conduct business in here. We've all been in here all day. Your council has been in here all day, staff has been in here all day. Please have some respect, okay? Let's get through this respectfully. Thank you.
And I don't shy away from this. I said in legislative committees that people were dumber for having listened to the idiot that talked before me, because they were talking about something that was very personal to them instead of what was best for the taxpayer, things like that. So I like it when people bang their fists, but you have to have informed people. We're talking about, there's a lot of discussion about how many people are in favor of it. If you would have spent 10 grand to go out there and do a little campaign, we could have 400 people lined up here. That isn't the main reason that you, that isn't the main criteria for how you want to do this. You want to look at the basic facts. You have to look at the subjective facts, which are the Preservation Committee's main goals. And I'm sorry, they're not objective. They are subjective, and I think, and I thought that, I like the energy, I really like how they looked at everything. But the solutions weren't solutions. Mass and scale, so does that mean that we're going to have fewer hotel rooms and then the project's not going to work? You basically just rejected the ability of a person to develop the property. You may get into legal issues on this, and I'm not kidding. This is something that could come back. You have to be very careful, and I'm not saying approve it, I already know it's going to be a no vote, but you have to be very careful and thoughtful with how you proceed. It can't just be, this is going to be something that we think doesn't look good in the area. I think it'd be fantastic. There's a belief that you can maintain the status quo in communities. If you do nothing new, you end up deteriorating. You don't maintain the status quo. That's why the property tax collections are slowing along Whiskey Row. That's why we're missing opportunities. And again, if there's a way to make this work, I would really encourage you to try to figure it out, but go beyond a, an opinion of mass and scale. That has so many different meanings. And so yes, make it work for you. If the public doesn't want this, the economics doesn't have to override what the public wants, but you at least have to consider it. And this is the first time it's been considered, and this is the last meeting on this. I don't think that that's acceptable.
Councilman Montoya had a question.
I can wait till Mr. Rounds is finished if he wants to, if he has more.
I only, I only have like a handful of slides, I'll go through them quickly.
Yeah, I'll wait until you're done.
Councilwoman Ferworth, you had a question?
Until he's finished.
Very well.
So yes, there, we calculated the extra economic benefits, $250,000 in ongoing tax revenue. That's revenue that can be put back into the community. In fact, I think if you balance, try, and when I mentioned people coming in to develop, I'm talking about improving current businesses. I'm talking about making businesses that otherwise might close more viable. I'm not talking about changing the character of everything. We're talking about how can we make everything work from an economic perspective and from a community perspective? And right now, I feel like it has not been balanced. Construction, $200,000. Denying a project because there might be some construction inconveniences? First time I ever heard that when it comes to any kind of a local project that could bring an extra revenue for a community. So does that mean you're not going to build anything? I've done 100 to 200 of these very similar presentations, and I'm having a hard time responding, because this is the first time that I've been so caught off guard with what has been said so far. Let me, let me just get to the, a couple of final points. There's not interest in the dollar amounts. Again, we recommended that Jim seek out some incentives to cover some of his costs. Had to do with some alley issues, connections to the parking structure, where they will be basically renting the parking spaces and paying the revenue for those spaces on a regular basis. It'll be ongoing revenue that'll be consistent. And it, for me, again, the reason I wanted to be here, came up here just for this meeting to get booed at, is you have to do a lot more. It's not just one thing. You're going to be faced with discussions and challenges for the next couple of years. Every time somebody brings up an issue of, we would like to maybe improve this building, are you going to set the precedent for, we would like to make it work? Or is it going to be, we are not going to work with folks? Because there's lots of other communities that people want to go to. I would like them to come here, where I spent a lot of time with my grandfather. Again, one of the few Arizona natives that likes to go around to the rest of the state. We want to be coordinating what we're going to be doing on tourism. But we, I'm not hearing a very open council on, we would like to continue economic development. And I tell you, looking at the finances, you're going to have to do a hell of a job the next two or three years, because you're not on a solid footing as many other communities. You need to get this stuff done now. And I'll let, I'll let Jim, if there's an interest in talking about the, he talked to somebody that could provide just as solid a feedback on what is consistent with historic and what isn't. Again, it's subjective. But if you're going to tell somebody, I don't want you to build on your own property, if he gets it within the general guidelines because of a couple of subjective matters, you need to maybe figure that out. This is a real problem. I really don't think everybody understands that this is a bad precedent that you might be setting. And I'm hoping that, and I do appreciate the public showing up. Again, I always tell people, show up and bang your fists at the podium at the Capitol, because nobody does it anymore. But they do it in rural Arizona, which I like. So I'm going to end it at that. If you have some questions for Jim, you have the, you have the report in the presentation. I'm really at a loss on why this, or a modified version of this, wasn't something that people are embracing. And I'll leave it at that. And yes, I am an expert in these topics. I've done this many times. I've talked, I've advised nearly every city in the state. We do economic analysis. We're the leading group on tourism, where we just wrote a 100-page econostrategic plan for Prescott Valley, and our plan is to coordinate it with what you're going to be writing this next year so that we can lift the entire region and lots of other neat things that we can be blending this on. So again, I really want this to work, and I hope I didn't offend anybody, but I did. Okay, well, I got booed, so it's okay.
Councilman Montoya, do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rounds, I appreciate the context that you're providing, and I think, I don't think it's, I would quibble with your suggestion a little bit to suggest that we didn't consider that, that context in the broader component of the decision-making process, because we've, we've seen your presentation, we were included with your materials in our presentation. Obviously, you have a right to get up and articulate it too. And I feel, I understand where you're coming from, and I think the broader point you're making is, there's some credence to it, but I guess what I would, I would challenge is, what I think it was Councilwoman Ferworth said, that this is perhaps the most iconic row of, you know, of the entire northern Arizona. And I would tend to agree, and I think if you look at, and I will say this as an elected official who has sat up here and approved and moved forward with a design concept that got a lot of negative feedback from the community as well, which is the redesign of our old city hall that we're redeveloping. The initial plan for that got a lot of negative feedback, and a lot of council stood behind trying to move forward with that project as it was done, and we continued to move forward with a second bidder in that process. So I don't So I don't think we are a council, I don't quite agree with your characterization that we are a council that is no to everything, or that we're not willing to look at the economic impacts. And that's a hotel, by the way. And we talked, and the folks that we worked with on that project, the second bidder, and even the first bidder for that matter, we were pretty clear to them, listen, you're in a historic district. You have to take in context, you know, the height of other buildings around. You have to take in context the height of the Courthouse Plaza. That really matters to not just the people in this room, but it matters to the culture of our community. And so, I guess, I don't want you to leave with a bad taste in your mouth, but I do want to say that this is, we understand economic impact, and suggesting that we don't is frankly insulting. And please, please, please don't. What I'm trying to say here, though, is, I think, and I don't want to speak for anyone else, but at least for myself up here, I'm committed to being part of economic development and growth in this community. And I think everyone up here is. But I think we also don't want to lose our culture and our identity and our community in the process. And I think, to your point, to your point, Mr. Rounds, it is a nuanced and difficult task that is in front of us. And I would suggest that of the Quad City, we are probably the one municipality who has the hardest task because we are the oldest municipality in this area. And so, it's not going to be easy. But again, I've got to say, this is different. And maybe that's not good enough for you, or good enough for your client, and I understand that, and I understand that he's going to have, you know, that this presents a challenge for him. I understand. And I guess, I wish there was a way to yes on this, but I just don't see it. So, thank you.
And if I could respond, Mr. Mayor? I think that the community's values should trump economic development. It doesn't, not everything has to be based about economic development, but I do believe my comments were valid just from the comments that I heard today. It doesn't seem, it didn't seem like a well-thought-out process. If you're going to recommend to somebody to do something different, you can't recommend to them to do something that doesn't work financially, or you're telling them, no. That is a big difference. And so, I know that this is the last hearing on it, but I wouldn't have made that introduction and that offer to share all of our information on how you could come up with clever ways on housing affordability if I didn't want to spend some time and see if there's some things that we can implement here and in Prescott Valley and in the Quad area. This is what we do well. And if you're not interested in taking advantage, that's fine, but the offer is always going to be on the table.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Councilman Montoya eloquently outlined my exact feelings, and I can't be any more insulted by you judging us on one interaction. And I do believe, honestly, that we haven't, you've been telling us that we're saying, no. We've been feeling as a community, we're getting the same reaction from Mr. Grissette. So it goes two ways, and this is our home. This is our most iconic block. There is a cultural importance to protecting this that we take very, very seriously.
And just to respond, there was, I didn't intend to insult anybody. I just like to tell it like it is, much like people in this room like to tell it like it is. And if this can't work, then it doesn't work. I'm not getting paid to be here. I volunteered to come down here. Mr. Grissette's hardly been billed. I think that there's tremendous opportunity on advancing tourism here. But we also, one of the things that I would advise is, the status quo, I think that the current building isn't going to be a long-term solution either. So maybe that can be, or maybe that should have been part of the prior steps, or it could be going forward. You don't have to end the work on this with this hearing. And I'm sorry that I'm a little bold with what I say, but that's just how I am.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've got a couple of questions real quick. So, Joe, let me ask you about the vote here. So we have four choices. We can affirm, which is basically deny. We can reverse. We can affirm in part, or we can reverse in part. So based on those four potential motions, I just want to get it straight with the owner. If this is turned down, in the spirit of property rights, does this man intend to go back and try to 100% comply with this, with the historic preservation requirements or suggestions? Do you have any intent of going back? Because I would like to allow you personally to go back to the drawing board and make this thing work, but you have to comply because you do own this property. And that is my question. Do you intend to go back and comply with that? Because that's going to make a difference on how I vote.
Mayor Protem, let me just run over a few things first before I answer your questions, if you don't mind. Regarding this historic preservation issue, which is obviously a big issue, the site is zoned for a hotel. I don't think there's any question about that. No parking is required. There's no question about that. The building is not historic, and it's listed as a non-contributing building on the city of Prescott's maps. The building has deteriorated beyond the point where it can be rehabilitated in an economically viable manner, and therefore demolition is allowed. The building department height limit in the downtown business district, and Whiskey Row for that matter, is 50 feet without a special use permit. The historic preservation master plan height limit is 48 feet. That's clearly stated. Our current design is 48 feet according to the International Building Code of 2018 that is currently used by the city of Prescott. After the project was rejected by the Prescott Preservation Commission, I was able to identify one of the top people in their field in the United States that understands architectural design and what fits within a community. My research directed me towards a renowned expert in the historic preservation and the Secretary of Interior's standards for historic resources. His name is Mr. Stephen Ayers of Ayers Consulting. Stephen Ayers is a fellow of the American Institute of Architects. He was appointed by the President of the United States of America as the 11th architect of the Capitol in Washington, DC. He also served on the President's Advisory Council on Historic Preservation. Mr. Ayers' duties covered all federal historic buildings in the entire United States. In 2018, Mr. Ayers received the Thomas Jefferson Award for Public Architecture by the American Institute of Architects. I'm sure that Mr. Ayers received extremely, I assure you that Mr. Ayers received an extremely detailed and lengthy package concerning the entire history of this project as I submitted. And here's a quote from part of it, it's in your package, but I'll read it. Mr. Ayers says, "I believe that the current design substantially meets the intent and criteria outlined in the Courthouse Plaza Historic District Guidelines and Master Plan, along with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Resources. I find it to be fully compatible, harmonious, and consistent with the historic character of Whiskey Row and will greatly enhance the district. Furthermore, I find the scale and massing," this is from one of the top historic preservation architects in the United States, the architect of the Capitol. "Furthermore, I find the scale, massing height, and architectural style to be appropriate for the setting. The existing building is not contributing to the historic district, and it has deteriorated beyond economically viable rehabilitation."
Can I interrupt you just for a second? Can you just give me a yes or a no on that in the interest of time?
Well, with all due respect, I believe I have a right to finish my presentation. Given that the entire process, including, for some reason, I find it absolutely amazing that I stand here. Prescott, Arizona has got a population of about 48,000 people, and I think it's awesome that everybody showed up here today. That's the beautiful aspect of the United States of America. Everybody gets to speak. But if you take the number of people here that are objecting and calculate the percentage of the total population, that's probably about a quarter percent of the entire population of the city of Prescott. That's pretty interesting. People that generally like things don't show up. So we've got people here, and while I appreciate all your comments and everything, this is a hotel that's a beautiful project. It contributes beautifully to the community, and I don't consider this the end of this quest.
Will you come back? Will you go back to the, do you intend to go back to the drawing board?
We've, no. We've spent tremendous amount of time and resources and capital coming up with a design that works. After the, one of the early historic preservation meetings, Kat Moody came up to me, the preservation specialist at the time, and said, Jim, you have to be at 48 feet. I am at 48 feet. So I really consider this a deprivation of my property rights.
Councilmember Ru Singh.
Mayor, may I ask, just real quick, Joe, just real quick on these four, so Joe, if we were to decide to say no today, but give him an opportunity again in the spirit of compliance, which one of these, would it be affirm in part?
It would be affirm in part or reverse in part. Either one sends it back down the Historic Preservation Commission.
Because I would, I would like to give you an opportunity to come into compliance. It's your property. I do believe, everybody's got valid points, but I also believe that they're working from a state of emotion. I would like to see you, I would like to have you come back and be in compliance. Give us a product that most people can get behind based on what you said. I do have an understanding of the economic portions of this. And I am a realist about the downtown area. I love it too. But I also know it takes money in order to keep those other buildings up. This town cannot survive on Whiskey Row on, with alcoholics, heavy drinkers, and whatever else. You go downtown after 10 o'clock, and I live downtown, after 10 o'clock at night, you go down there Monday through Friday. Those businesses are essentially empty. They're not going to be able to preserve the buildings that are around them in those businesses. You go into the areas underneath those buildings that you can't even see. Do you know, do you have any idea the amount of money it takes to preserve those businesses? We've got to be able to do something. I would like to give him the opportunity, again, recognizing he does have property rights, just like all of you do. Give him the opportunity to come into compliance and bring us a product that we can get to, wrap our heads around. It'll help us financially to be able to do that. If he comes back and he's not in compliance, it'll be an absolute no. But I think we ought to give him a chance. It would be the same thing as anybody telling you what to do with your property. The message has come through loud and clear. So for me, I would like to give you the opportunity to do that. I just wanted to figure out which way to vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ru Singh.
You know, I just support the Historic Preservation Committee, and I support the grounds that they, on scale and masking, that they denied this. You know, it's just out of proportion. And so, my question is, can we move to affirm, which is, we just completely support their decision 100%, and then he can appeal and go back to the Preservation Commission?
Part of the process, because we're here for the process, is that the Prescott Preservation Commission has representatives here to discuss their decision. That is part of the appeal process, which we have to go through. And then you have public comment as well. So it's ultimately, obviously, to the mayor, but if we're going to go through this process, then that's, those are our next steps before a motion is taken.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gamboge.
If I could be afforded the latitude of making the following statement, I would appreciate it. I think we're setting an awfully bad precedent. In last Thursday's Board of Adjustment meeting, the residents of Prescott Canyon came out because they really didn't want a gas station located across the driveway from them. But I was pleasantly surprised how they conducted themselves in the meeting. They used the opportunity for public comment to come out and speak out against the gasoline station. In the second Planning Commission meeting over the airport, I opened it with the following statement. Prescottonians, I'm sad to report that Washington, DC politics has come to everybody's hometown. We were in the old council chambers where that phrase was on the wall, which suggests that we're friendly and we're neighborly. And I haven't seen that kind of conduct in this meeting today. So I would ask you, you have time for public comment. You can make your comment at the time, but catcalls and cheering and attacking, you can attack the subject all you want, but I think it's all out of bounds to attack the person.
All right, I think we have an opportunity to listen to the Prescott Preservation Commission members and hear what their deliberation and reasoning was for their vote. Mike Kelly.
I will, my name is Michael King. I live at 2559 Aaron Circle. I'm a 28-year resident of this town, this village. I've served on this historical commission for nine years. I'm the vice chairman. I would have liked to have this before your dialogue, because this is what I'm saying is going to just repeat, because you have some of the pre-work in the minutes. So there's going to be some redundancy here, and I'm going to read my notes. I'm going to give you the whole nine yards as if you never heard it before or even thought about it. I recognize the importance of my words, so I'm going to read them. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, and Mr. Grissette, he's here somewhere, behind the post. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council today. It's a daunting responsibility to represent the comments and the rationale of our seven-person commission. I've reviewed the notes of our meetings on this proposal, and I'm going to summarize our collective considerations that led to our decision to deny Mr. Grissette's proposal for demolition of existing structures and the construction of the Plaza Hotel. What, see, one of the things you're talking about today, we didn't have the benefit to use. We are commissioners, and our role is to review and approve, approve with conditions or disapprove plans to remodel, demolish, move, or change the existing appearance of any existing building within an established district, and review plans to construct any new building, structure, or sign in an established district. The design criteria of the district shall be used as a guideline. That's our tool. That's our tool. Commission members are volunteers. We apply for these positions. We're selected by you. We take our responsibility seriously. We care about and value the historical resources of our community. We do our homework, and we do the best we can. Before I summarize our findings, I want to identify the context of which we reviewed the information and the decisions. the information and the decisions, the culture and the traditional values and aspects of our community. Context can be defined as decisions or events of the past which relate to today and give meaning to today's events and decisions. The Great Fire of 1900 destroyed most of the wooden buildings on Whiskey Row and the buildings westerly down towards the rail yard where staples and sprouts are located. This starts the dialogue. You're not the first to deal with this kind of issue. You may think you are. In the new construction that followed the fire, the owners of what is now the St. Michael's Hotel requested approval to build a four-story hotel. Community involvement and council members' concerns were identified about the building's height. The results are evident. It's a three-story building. And from that time on, all buildings that were constructed after the fire were of that three-story level. And that's what Specialist Nunez-Kahle said. Our master plan is built on a three-story building because that's all we saw in the future. Not necessarily, not necessarily. Ownership has changed over time. Building uses have changed, and new construction has all been of the same profile that exists on Whiskey Row today. That's been maintained for 123, 127 years. The master plan relates that in its own words. Scale, setback, mass, materials, color, and craftsmanship are all uniform. The pride and spirit of unity that prevailed after the fire and the following years provides an irreplaceable and invaluable asset of history which must not be destroyed. In the 1980s, citizen involvement and councils recognized the importance of historical preservation, and you formed a preservation committee 40 years ago. Our initial action, your initial actions, our initial actions were to help you develop city ordinances relative to historical preservation. Following that, a city in 1997, with you as the leaders in this, developed a historical preservation master plan. You approved it. Not you personally, but your body. This plan took a comprehensive look at our entire community and the designation of various historical districts. Each has its own identity and guidelines based on the buildings and their uses. Today's topic, as mentioned before, Historic Courthouse Plaza, the icon of our community, which is a National Register Historic District. The master plan of 1997 does an outstanding job of describing threats to the courthouse district integrity. It foretold the acquisition of several properties by a single developer to make way for a larger project. By the way, I'm quoting right from the master plan, because that's the tool we have. We can't talk economics with our plan. You gave us the charter to be commissioned and deal with the design criteria in the plan. So it foretold of the acquisition of several projects. It foretold the pressures for a larger, taller, and incompatible buildings are likely, which could cause a serious threat to the integrity of the district. It foretold of proposed new construction or modifications that are greater than 48 feet, which is the maximum height allowed. It foretold the demolition of historic resources to make for larger commercial and business Depending on your politics, it doesn't matter. 2004, Prescott was designated as a Preserve America Community by the White House. This award, I quote, "honors our city for its commitment to the protection and interpretation of America's history and resources. Furthermore, Prescott uses its historical, cultural, and interpretive assets to enhance economic vitality and celebrate its cultural character and traditions." This brings us to the master plan and the guidance and the mandates. It was approved, and it was used by proponents who have come before us for the last decades as their way to work within the context of building and modifying buildings. Now, Mr. Grissette bought this property knowing full well what the -- maybe perhaps not, but full well that he was working within the master plan, and he should try to meet some of those objectives. The guidelines we use, we cite those in our decisions. So the master plan and the mandates of the master are part of our decision-making. So here we are today at a crossroads. Our commission is limited. We're talking economics. Concerns addressed by the public about parking, about alternative uses or sites, about interference with downtown activities and business opportunities during construction, they're all important. We couldn't consider those. Our job, you told us our job, use the master plan guidance, okay? Furthermore, we don't consider statements made by Mr. Grissette about economic benefits or revitalizing our tired community. We didn't consider those. We had no economic analysis. They were pure statements from the podium. Our decisions are within the windows described, in our role and defined by our attorney here and in the city charter, not charter, but city directions. Design criteria should be used. Mr. Grissette made an initial proposal, and over the last several months has modified most aspects. Some of these were at the advice of the shippo, but most were due to the concerns of city staff and us as commissioners, commission members. We were concerned about windows, materials, colors, textures, and setbacks. He made modifications to those. Some height adjustments were made, but mass and scale were not. Mass and scale is right there. Yes, we got the White House attorney. By the way, I just personally feel like this is a David and Goliath. I'm standing here with the slingshot, because I got the White House, you know, architect. It's my own personal feeling. And I got an economic guy here that's got 50 pages of why you should change your -- overturn our decision. So if the building is demolished, these are the things that don't work for us. If the building is demolished with the official consent of us, it shall be replaced with a building of similar massing and scale to the contributing buildings in the district. Rule number one. The guidelines set forth in this document shall in all cases be followed for new construction to maintain the character of downtown Prescott. Hotel doesn't meet these. Our paramount concerns are height, scale, and massing. And with these factors, that's all we had to work with, was the master plan, we denied the proposal. You know that. But to -- excuse me, Connie, excuse me, informality. Any new proposal for a structure on that site that meets the criteria will be fully considered. We are not set on protecting those existing buildings, the Harley Store and the others. That's not what it's about. They're nonconforming. Yeah, you could be nominated because they're 50 years old, but 1967, '68, when they were built, they were nonconforming. In the simplest words, you hired us. You hired us as commissioners. We volunteered. We were told of our duties, job description, if you will, master plan. Here's your tool. Use it in all aspects of your work. There may be some distractions. Stay focused. Get to work. And so we did. Now it's your turn. On behalf of the commission, I want to thank Kaylee for her technical support for us and also Sarah Hilton for her thorough and accurate notes that are part of your record and part of our record. So thank you for your attention. There's been a lot of dialogue. I just said it's redundancy. We did our job. We did it to the best of our ability. If you take other things into consideration, then that's up to you. But we stayed -- new term, we stayed in our lane. We stayed in our wheelhouse, huh? God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. King. Councilman Gambogie, did you have a question for Mr. King? Do any other of the commissioners from the Preservation Commission want to make any comments?
Is there a question?
Thank you, Mike. I guess now we'll go to public comment.
Mayor, I think we have a schedule that the applicant has a chance for rebuttal of that first.
All right. Very well. Mr. Grissette, do you want to take advantage of any rebuttal time here?
Thank you for your comments. The big word that's always shown up in all the discussions and meetings is scale and massing. Scale and massing is a very subjective term. I feel that we have met the height limit. By setting the building back 20 feet from Whiskey Row, we actually lent the building to blend in more beautifully with the other buildings on Whiskey Row. And even the state architect, Susan Lawson, made that comment. But scale and massing is the big thing. It's a hugely subjective term. And so we've -- the architect, the former architect of the United States Capitol reviewed this in detail, and he said, "There's no problem with it." So that's my comment on that.
He doesn't live here. He lives. He doesn't live here.
The gentleman that you are commenting about is internationally renowned. He was appointed by the President of the United States. And the reason I brought him in is because there's been a continual reference to the federal standards and the Secretary of Interior. And this particular gentleman is an expert on the Secretary of Interior.
Thank you, Mr. Grissette.
Thank you.
And we're so pleased to know that President Barack Obama, who made the statement that he wanted to fundamentally transform the United States, was the one who appointed this guy. So I guess this is part of his fundamental transportation, transformation.
Mr. Mayor, I won't even dignify that statement of yours with an answer.
Mayor, would you like to move on to public comment now and stick with the process?
Actually, Mayor, I have a question, if I can, before we move to public comment.
All right. Councilman Montoya.
Thank you. I don't know who over there in planning and zoning or community development land can answer this question, but it was just suggested that scale and massing is a subjective term. But by their definition, they don't seem, like us, those ideas don't seem subjective to me as they can be measured. So I'm just, I'm curious if they are truly subjective or if they're objective, because to me, my understanding of those terms is that they're measurable, which would make them objective. I just want some clarity there.
Okay. So I will speak to this. I do not have the credentials that Mr. Ayers has. I did have a question if he's ever visited Prescott. But going back to scale and massing, I did go through one year of architecture school, switched majors, but to me, it's not subjective. So you have scale as it relates to the human and scale as it relates to the surrounding built environment. So for me, there's two kind of environments I'm considering.
So that there's subjective measure to it, but those components, either constituent or composite, are measurable?
Yes, they're dimensions with numbers.
Yeah. I mean, that's why, I'm just struggling, because, and I'm sorry if this is just absurd, but to me, it'd be like if someone said to me, you know, numbers are subjective, like they're right there. There's one, two, three, and four, like, you know, or speed limits are subjective to a Councilman Moore's comment to me just now. I mean, at some point, you know, numbers are numbers, and then we use those numbers to measure things, and then if they're not measuring to measures, then I'm just, I'm sorry. It's late.
No, you're correct. It's subjective in the reference point, right? So, yeah, to human, to Whiskey Row, to the district as a whole.
The other question I have for you, Kaylee, and this came up for me, too, is, as a matter, of course, and maybe this has already been beaten to death, but we, you made the point earlier in your presentation, I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. We measure height by the tallest component of the building, not by a terrace stepping back and then creating a sense of a smaller -- like, I guess what I'm saying is, you couldn't create like a stair step back and then go up like 1,000 feet with your elevator shaft.
No, it's just the highest point of the mass. So like, you know, I think where we kind of got off on this was, there was, you know, in zoning code, mechanical and equipment rooms can be exempt from the overall height. That's not how we operate in preservation. It's the highest point of the structure, period.
And that's not ambiguous in the historical master plan?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Yes, I want to talk about mass and scale. You know, and what we can consider is what's been provided to us. I look in our -- I look in our pre-reading package at page, at page 552, which is a more photographic version of what later on you have shared in your presentation, which is page 557, which is more architectural drawings. In both instances, when you get that view from the corner of Monizuma and Gurley, you see the mass. You see the height. You see what is viewed by many as being inappropriate. My question would be, we are all okay with a three-story building. We've lived with it for a long time in the corner. We're all okay with an outdoor porch like what we're used to hanging out of Jersey Lilies. I would, again, I understand the parking issue, but Mr. Grissette does have a right to put a business that's allowed on his property. And so the question is, would we potentially be interested to consider, what's the right motion here? To affirm in part or reverse in part? I don't know which is the right way. To give him another shot? I know he's, personally, I love sitting up and drinking wine on a third-floor terrace, but just not on Whiskey Row. You know, could we think through other beautifully creative ways to allow you to have your hotel, and yet you still meet our historic guidelines? And I think we'd like to give you one more shot, because I think you see that we're serious about protecting our historic guidelines. Again, I know, I understand the parking, everybody. I understand the parking. It's a problem. But we're not allowed to consider that when we're talking about the potential of what might happen with us fully denying and not giving him one more shot at coming into a win-win solution. So I bring those things up. I don't expect you to answer, Kaylee, but I'm very impressed with the presentation we just got from Historic Preservation. I think if he could lose the open-air market, use the space accordingly, I want you to have a penciled-in business that makes money, you know? I know you need all those hotel rooms. But we haven't done enough dialogue. We haven't done enough dialogue to get there. So that's just my suggestion.
Can I address that? You've asked a few times about the in-part reversing or affirming. So I think the way to look at it is like a condition, when you approve something with a condition. So you would articulate what specifically would be outside of the design criteria and ask that it go back to, so you'd affirm, but with the condition that it goes back to Historic Preservation to meet that specific guideline that you have an issue with.
Councilmember Ru Sing.
Thank you. I'm, I don't think I qualify as an old timer yet, but I'm getting pretty close. I remember when this very building that we're in was being proposed, and it was very controversial, and the main issue was the height. And the property owner did have to comply with the citizens and with our three-story guideline. But as far as I'm concerned, I think that we need to comply with our very own historic district guidelines and criteria and not bend the rules. So either his building as proposed doesn't comply, or it does, and it obviously doesn't. So I think we, that's what we're looking at, and it doesn't comply 100%. And that's why I think we should just... And that's why I think we should just not agree with it. We should agree with the Historic Preservation Commission, and it's up to him if he wants to comply as far as mass and whatever else we're talking about.
Okay, that's enough from council. Let's go to a public comment.
Okay. I'm really tired, and I'm definitely going to mispronounce this last name, so I apologize in advance. Glenn Bevillacqua?
It's Glenn Bevillacqua. Drink the water in Italian. Hello, I'm Glenn Bevillacqua, a partner in the business known as the Historic Palace Hotel Restaurant -- Hotel Restaurant on Whiskey Row. I'm qualified in many ways. Sadly, I was going to read what was presented by the Preservation Society, but now I'm not going to take the time to do that. I do have to tell you, we've been talked down to a little bit today.
Could you get a little closer to the microphone?
Yes. And we've been talked down to a little bit today, especially in my particular case. I've been a licensed real estate professional for 50 years. I've been self-employed for 50 years. I know everything about real estate, okay? And I don't know how many people in here can raise their hands and match my 50 years. I also know community politics. I also know community development projects. It is very important we deal in just facts right now. And everything I'm about to talk about are facts. But I wanted to qualify because I've kind of gotten the feeling that you think, especially the way I'm dressed, and quite frankly, I was shoveling horse manure this morning at my property, but I do have some intellect, and I have a lot of knowledge. And I know that somebody that owns real estate has the right to develop it. I get all that. It doesn't mean you get to do whatever you want to do. And I kind of feel like you guys are going a little bit on that line. You shouldn't be doing that. There are absolutes in the world, like these DAs that don't follow the rules absolutely. How's that working out? So there are absolutes in the world, and maybe you guys need to think about that when you vote. That's a thought. We've been told by the developer, because I was at prior meetings, that the demolition and construction project will be simple, with minimal to no impairment on Whiskey Row. A current example of downtown construction project, the former Galloping Goose, it's an interior remodel. It's been going on for six months. It's not completed. Obviously, there's been some issues with it. That's an interior remodel without the change of a footprint. This is going to be what? This is going to be demolition of three buildings, dig out a basement, finish the basement, and build a hotel. Construction projects do not go as planned, including your very own construction projects of your offices. I can guarantee you, from my 50 years' experience in construction projects, this one here, it's got some major, major, major roadblocks. In the event this hotel was built, the negative long-term effects on parking, infrastructure, and utilities, plus the depreciation of the historical character and architecture of the Courthouse Plaza will be something we will never recover from. At public meetings, wherein it's important that issues at stake, we utilize commentary that is correct and fact-based. Everything I've told you is fact-based. This is not emotion.
Please conclude your remarks.
Pardon?
Please conclude your remarks.
I sincerely hope that the Prescott City officials do the right thing and deny this demolition and construction application, as they are entrusted by their constituents to be caretakers of our exceptional city.
That's it.
Cowboy Dave.
Can you give us your name, please?
David Segal, Prescott, Arizona. Let's talk about economics. The gentleman that was speaking on behalf of the developer was talking about economics to the city. He wasn't talking about the demise of those of us who came here to make Prescott our home because of the love of the area. We've all seen the demise of California. It's because of projects like this. California is now a Third World nation. It will not come back in my lifetime. We've seen these types of demises. To the gentleman that was speaking on behalf of the builder developer, as expressed by council members, I, too, feel insulted. We don't need your advice. The majority of retired residents have business backgrounds here, and I find your veiled threats of a lawsuit reprehensible. Councilmember Freworth, councilmember Ken Tellme. I'm a born-again capitalist. But, Ken Tellme, you asked the gentleman, "Will he comply?" He gave you a flat-out "no." For you or any other council member to give him a do-over is a slap in the face of all of us that live here. And to city attorney, when you started this discussion, you advised the council that they may consider other important information that they may have. The important information that each of you has is, what do your constituents want? I've been at every one of these meetings. I've spoken up at every one of these meetings. And although a number of people have left right now because of the length of this meeting, the vast majority of your constituents do not want this project, period. And that's your extraordinary information that you need to consider. And lastly, I hope that when the motion comes up, that it will be to affirm, i.e. deny, in its entirety, with a caveat that this issue not be addressed again. We, the residents, are tired of coming here on this issue. He has told you he will not comply.
Don, again, I hope I pronounce this correctly, Beal?
I'll help you with that, Beal. Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Don Beal. I'm a longtime Prescott resident, 951 Norris Road. I feel like I'm a lamb about to go to slaughter. Back in the '90s, I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we, let's see, Don Carcy, Mel Barrett, myself, Jerry Smith-Fanara, every one of us all said we all had to do whatever we can to preserve and protect our crown jewel. The crown jewel meaning our courthouse square. Now, preserve and protect does not mean that we can't enhance our crown jewel. And I'll give you an example. I've owned several properties on Monizuma Street with my partners. Back in the '90s, Fred York, Jerry Williams, and myself owned what was called the Roar Bloom Building. We would not admit to owning that building because it was so ugly. Some of you have been here long enough to know it had all that metal siding on the side of it. And then Jerry did a restoration project, removed the siding, stuccoed it, and put the awnings up. We were absolute heroes. Everybody loved us. And what I look at today is something similar, that we're looking at the possibility of replacing an old rundown building with what I consider to be a very attractive, you know, state-of-the-art hotel. And what I don't understand is why the downtown merchants aren't screaming to get this done. Now, we think about it. Anybody who is going to stay in that hotel is going to have money, because that is going to be one high-dollar hotel there, Mr. Grissette. I guarantee it. And what are they going to do? They're going to park their car in our garage, and then they're going to walk around the courthouse square, and they're going to spend their out-of-town money. And here's the best part. When they're done, they're going to go pack up and leave. Yeah, I think maybe we ought to build more hotels and fewer houses. When I was young and in business, I was very pro-growth. But, you know, now that I'm all fat and retired, you know, I kind of, like so many others, I'd like to close the gates. The problem I have with that is the hypocrisy behind that. Yeah, I just hate hypocrisy, especially in government and politics. You know, I don't see how we can say no, especially if we look at a modification here to this particular hotel, and then look at the potential of a similar project on City Hall property.
Please conclude your remarks.
I'm sorry?
Please conclude your remarks.
Okay. Ken, I guess I would conclude by saying, you know, we used to own this property, too. And as you said, it was proposed as being a five-story building. The city said no. Three-story max, and you have to walk -- it has to be out of the floodway. So that's why we all walk up a flight of stairs to get into the first floor. But just a few years later, across the street caddy corner is a four-story hotel that you enter at ground level, right next to Granite Creek. Now, my point of that is, real simple, that it's almost like the city says--
Sir, you have three minutes.
It's okay for me, but not for the--
You have three minutes to make your comments.
My comment is simply, we're saying it's okay for the city on city-owned property, but not on private property. You know, I agree. Whatever we can do to make it comply should be done. I personally think it's a beautiful project, and the overwhelming, I believe, silent majority are in favor. They like it. I think it's a beautiful project, and he ought to reconsider and make it work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please, everyone making public comments has a three-minute time limit. We'll give you a little bit of latitude, but let's try to keep it to that.
I could say good afternoon, but I think it's now good evening, mayor, council. Long day. Not too many happy faces up there on the podium. So I'm originally from California. Cowboy Dave is correct. We saw what's going on there. It can happen here. At least two council members have called this Whiskey Row iconic. Well, it's still iconic at seven, almost 7:00 o'clock tonight. I would say that the city council, after hearing the comments from the property owner, only have one decision to make. Affirm the denial that the conservation group, the historical group, has already recommended. Thank you.
Richard Thompson.
Richard Thompson, Prescott, mayor, council. I think one of the significant things I got from the Architectural Committee's report was, a developer buys a piece of property, then comes in and proposes something he knows doesn't meet the requirements, then he complains that, "Oh, I'm usurping my property rights." We put these ordinances and regulations in place to protect our community. Your councils did this. I really propose you don't affirm this. You affirm the denial. If the applicant wants to come back with their proposal that meets it, that's fine. That's his privilege. But please affirm the denial. Thank you.
Linda Thompson.
First, I want to say that this is really a treat to be in agreement with the city council. Overall, this is very nice. I first, I have felt really insulted by what's been said. And he has no idea who we are. He just thinks we're these podunk people. And we are from all over, all walks of life, all professions. I helped build the Space Shuttle. I mean, you don't know who you're talking to. And it's really insulting to speak that way to us. We don't need, and I've said this before, we don't need Hotel California here. We don't need it. It's not the way -- that's not where our ordinances are. We came here. We bring people here. We're very proud of this iconic community. And please, he already said no. There's no point in saying maybe. He said no. No. It's very clear. If you can back it up, and there's a recording perhaps, he said no, he won't do it. So just affirm, and if he wants to come back and whatever he thinks he can say to us that's different. And I know we all sound that we're being rude and outspoken. We're all frustrated. We've been doing this how many times? Okay, so that's what you're hearing, is our frustration, and I know it sounds rude. Anyway, please do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Peggy Glenn.
How are you doing? Is anybody else's stomach grumbling? Yeah, really. So yay, Prescott is desirable, right? Prescott is the place to be. It's written up in magazines all over the place. Mr. Grissette, I get you on one point, that this is be a great place to do business, if you would do business the way the community does business. It seems to me that in making that purchase, he and whoever else is in on it with him did not do the due diligence that has now been done by the Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission and all the work that's gone into this town for the last couple hundred years. Due diligence is really important, and if you make a bad purchase, then walk away from it the best way you can. Please, he asked for decorum, you guys. Come on, be brave, be nice. In terms of Mr. Montoya calling mass and scale, or somebody calling it subjective, you know, my father was a real old-fashioned Massachusetts guy, and he called oblivious when you tried to put 10 pounds of horse manure in a 5-pound bag. Mass and scale is not subjective. It fits or it doesn't fit.
I think that was the point I was trying to make, actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just to be clear.
But what really bothers me about this whole thing, I've watched it for over a year now, it feels like a bad stalker relationship. It's not funny. How many times have any of you been in a relationship that you shouldn't have been in, and the person kept coming back saying, "Well, give me another chance." "Oh, well, let's talk about this." "Oh, well..." You didn't say no, did you? No is no is no. It's two letters, "no." It's a beautiful project for another location. If that's what you want to do, put it somewhere else, sell off your bad purchase, and come back to Prescott with a better idea.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity. Yet, here we are again. Sarah mentioned to us a while ago that we were being disrespectful. I think you were right. But let's talk about how disrespectful Mr. Grissette is, that he won't listen to what the people here want to say. He doesn't want to hear it. That's called being disrespectful. I'm sorry, I've been here 30 years. This is my town. It's not a city. It's our town. Let's keep at that. I've been in construction for 40-plus years, and I know for a fact that when that building starts coming down, it won't come down alone. I've seen it too many times. When half a block down the road, there's a vacant lot for sale-- When half a block down the road, there's a vacant lot for sale, why can't we put a hotel there? Vacant lot. I don't understand it. But yet, he's going to disrespect the town, disrespect the council, the Preservation Commission, and keep trying. I'm sorry. I hope you listen to your constituents, as was stated earlier. Thank you.
Margaret and Ryle? Debbie, what's your last name?
Wyatt.
Wyatt?
W-Y-A-T-T.
Thank you.
And I live on High Chaparral Loop in Prescott. First of all, thank you for allowing us to have this time to voice our opinions and our feelings about this. And sir, to you from California, I understand and I appreciate, from a business perspective, all the advice and everything that he got, the due diligence that he supposedly did, and so on and so forth. But the fact of the matter is this: the people of Prescott do not want this. This is not something that we want to do to our beautiful square and to dishonor the Whiskey Row area. I guess, to me, this is almost like a city planning issue, a management issue. Why is this particular parcel commissioned or zoned for a hotel? If that happened 100 years ago, if it happened in the '60s, whenever it happened, it's not appropriate in today's world. The amount of traffic, the amount of visitors, the amount of tourism, the people who live here who have to navigate through this hub, particular part of our city, it's detrimental to have a hotel that's going to bring about a bunch of traffic and a bunch of parking issues. We already have those issues. It's a disservice to the community to bring more of those issues, because we, as residents of Prescott, have to deal with this on a daily basis. I've been to places in California where, honestly, I wouldn't go back, because they're hard to navigate. You can't find parking. You can't get to the store that you want to visit. I can see how this type of situation could be detrimental to the other businesses on Whiskey Row, because people can't get to them. We're an aging population. We don't have the wherewithal, I guess, or the ability to park in the parking garage or on one of the streets around the square. This parking garage already has enough parking issues. We don't need to add more to that. So I hope that within your discussions that you're going to have, and whatever you're going to be offering to him, I hope that you deny this, because I feel it's going to be a detriment. It's a beautiful project, but it deserves to be somewhere else other than on Whiskey Row.
Dennis Gallagher. John O'Neill Lutz.
Thank you, mayor and city council, for letting us comment on this. I live at 542 North Haciumpa Drive in the historic district of Park Avenue. I've worked in the -- operated retail in the iconic Sam Hill's warehouse building for 43 years. I -- the scale and mass of this building is what allows for 55 hotel rooms and 65 employees that will be using up 80 parking spaces all the time. And I know you say that you're not in charge of parking, but there are certain things that are the shared resources of the community. And things like water, our city parks, and our parking are our shared resources. And there simply isn't an extra 80 spaces on Whiskey Row. I mean, you know, I think this would have a negative impact on the other businesses, not only during construction, but when it's fully occupied and staffed. So I know my business. I currently have Van Gogh's Art Gallery in the Sam Hill's building. And I know my business is thriving and doing great, and that's because this is such a wonderful city, and let's keep it this way. Thank you.
Autumn Klein.
Hi. My name is Autumn Klein, and I own the Prescott Trading Company, which is right next to the projects. So you've seen me in all the pictures. And I've been there for almost 17 years now. So I think that's a testament to how busy our downtown is, that most of the businesses that are down there have been there for a long time, because they do have the foot traffic, and they do have the visitors coming through. I work down there five or six days a week, and I talk with a lot of visitors and locals. They love our history. They love the downtown. Removing more businesses is going to cut down on foot traffic, because people come downtown to shop, go to the restaurants, go to the bars. We just lost a big business on the corner, the Galloping Goose. So cutting down foot traffic is not going to help us. They don't come to see hotels, they come to stay in them and sleep. The disruptions during this is going to be monumental. If they start blasting for a basement, what's going to happen to my walls? They're 123 years old. They're brick and mortar, you know? Are they going to crumble? All my products are going to fall and break. I can't leave my walls empty for years. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. We all know it's going to take longer than they say. There's going to be a big loss of revenue for everybody downtown. Remember after the fire in 2012? The scaffolding and everything that was downtown forever? That disruption, it was ugly. It was just, it didn't look good. I think it's important to preserve the downtown for, you know, our future generations, preserve our history. A lot of our business owners downtown, we're constantly contributing our time, donations, we're participating in events to make our downtown a better place. To set a precedent like this, it does a disservice to us and our time that we have spent to create this special place and preserve it. Allowing this project to move forward would tear down a part of Whiskey Row and everything we've worked really hard to build. So I understand private property rights, but when I buy in an HOA, I have to follow the rules too. So that's all.
Don Cosco.
Good evening. I'm Don Cosco. To begin, I'd like to thank the Historic Preservation Society for their informative presentation. I learned something. I'm not going to reiterate what a lot of people have said, other than, I've seen a lot of change in Prescott in 62 years. Yes, that's right. I'm a hometown boy, and not all the change has been good. As I come back to my hometown, where I now will reside permanently, I look around and I see on the walls some of the beautiful, natural formations that were created by the Creator. And we have been given the time to make good decisions in how we become stewards of what He has given us. Mankind can only mar what the Creator has created. And I hope we are going to look long and hard about all development in this town, as I've seen it grow. The plaza is a gem, and we cannot act hastily about it. We have to think about it. A few things, let me just go over. Number one, the size and scale. It's going to block views of thumbbut, of the sunsets that we have from that area. It's going to stand out like a sore thumb. It's not congruent with the rest of the architecture, I don't think, at this point. Something else will go there, but not at that height. I don't want to be looking at an elevator shaft, okay, sticking up there. It just doesn't comport, doesn't look well. Blocking the sunsets, blocking the sunlight, have we thought about in the winters? There might be some ice conditions from not melting properly or whatnot. Also, we've already heard about it may pose substantial risk to the neighboring buildings. These are old buildings. When you have that weighty equipment coming in, there's likelihood of damage, and it's irreparable that might occur. Traffic disruption during the process, not only on Monizuma, but also the alleyway behind. The character of the plaza is at stake. Now, the economic impact, bear in mind, this is not a one-off. Prescott is a desirable place to start businesses, you know? This is a wealthy community, and you're going to be hit with other hotel proposals. And that's fine. I can look out these windows during the daylight and point to you a half a dozen very nice properties that are underutilized, that stand out like, you know, teeth in the mouth, that, you know, the key wall, where the keys are on the fence, that should be developed as a hotel.
Please conclude your remarks.
Okay, objectively, the owner wants to make profit. I don't feel that alienating the consumers by threats of lawsuits or bad blood or anything, we're not going to recommend hotels to our friends and family who come here to visit. I am opposed to this particular project. There are other sites that are amenable to it. So thank you for your time, and you will make the right decision. And bear in mind, generations down the road are going to benefit from the good decisions you make, and unfortunately, the bad decisions you make, they'll never know the beauty that we have here in Prescott.
Wendy Johnson.
I'm Wendy Johnson. I live in Prescott. I'm Wendy Johnson. I live in Prescott, and I'm not going to reiterate everything that's been said that I agree with. And I do apologize, because yes, there was some disrespect going on. But I think it's because the people in this community, in this room, are very passionate about preserving this beautiful town. I am not an old-timer. I came here because I have family here for a very long time. And I brought my daughter and my granddaughter, and they play on the plaza, okay? And we love it here. And I am also an underwriter, and we do ground-up construction. So I have to say that your project is very beautiful, and it should not be there, because it will be detrimental to the structural integrity of the buildings around it, and therefore, it will detrimentally affect the downtown that we all love, okay? As far as the economics go, if people are frustrated because they cannot park, because they cannot get to the other businesses, that will detrimentally also affect the businesses, okay? I could go on and on, but I pretty much think I know what's going to happen here, and I'm very happy and I'm very proud to be part of this community, and I'm going to say something that some people may not like. I originally am from New York. I was raised in California. I came to Arizona all through my life. And I chose to come here because I escaped the decline of civilization. Honestly, I did. And you can hate me for coming from there, but I came here because I have family here, I love it here, I have friends here. This is the first time in my life I have ever felt at home, and I have traveled the world. And as far as the disrespect and the veiled threats, it doesn't matter, because these people and myself, we are not going to roll over. So, in conclusion, I want to thank you. I have not had the opportunity to come to these meetings, because I work, and I am fortunate enough to be able to be flexible enough to take in the time off. I'll be working until 11 o'clock tonight, mind you. But there's a lot of people who could not make it here. So to that comment of only we're a quarter of a percent of the population, if, and I have a friend back there who's going to hate me for saying this, if these meetings were later in the day, we would have seen a huge turnout. And I dearly please hope that you deny this, and take your hotel and put it in a different place in Prescott. It's a beautiful project, but it doesn't make sense there. Thank you.
Tom Riley. I think you left. That's all, mayor.
Well, I think we're ready to make a motion here. And I'm going to make the motion.
Did it go all that way?
So I move to affirm the Prescott Preservation Commission's decision to deny this project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Was that Councilmember Rusing on the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
I did initiate it, but the system's been going for about seven hours, so it may not have popped up. I can just do, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes 7-0.
There you go. All right, that concludes our agenda today, and I will close this meeting with a following quote from one of our founding fathers: "The care of human life and happiness and not their destruction..."
The meeting is still going, everybody.
"...is the first and only object of good government." Thomas Jefferson, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.